Hey, everyone. I'll, I'll just be on to correct Jeff if he makes any mistakes. Oh, y'all are on mute.
Sunshine. I mean, last time you had a, how was your trip to Colorado Springs?
Thanks for everyone joining us on.
We're back to Denver.
I think everyone's on.
Okay. Does anyone know about Gina's schedule? I'm sure she's coming.
Running a bit late.
Yeah, I got, I got from.
It's good.
Last minute emails, forgot.
I mean.
You can go ahead.
I would say we could probably just go ahead and.
Okay.
Are you hanging out here for the day tomorrow?
Uh, well, I actually wasn't sure if I was coming back in person or not tomorrow, so I wasn't sure what the, what the board wanted, so I have to go back anyways. But I can always come back.
I don't think you need to make that drive.
We didn't plan.
Yeah, I've got meetings, meetings tomorrow, so, okay.
We didn't expect that.
It was a beautiful drive today, though.
Yeah.
I marked where all the deer were, the elk were, for the way.
Oh, you did? See a lot today?
They're unusual spot just down here on twenty.
Okay.
Few spot on two eighty-five, so.
Pretty much everywhere.
I've had a couple, I've had a couple of close.
I was five thirty to seven thirty. So she's on her way.
Okay. Yeah, there've been a lot of elk around this year.
I wonder if this, the snow's pushed them down a bit.
Oh, it could be, yeah.
And I had one, one fully locked up skid, skid, missing an elk by.
Did? Not today.
Six years ago, kind of the one in the morning thing and.
Oh, man.
Just ran out right in front of the road. I just had the brakes on, I skidded around it.
Wow.
Stayed on the road and I was like, okay, now I'm fully awake.
That happens.
Where was that? Did you see?
That was, uh, that was probably just, um, was it on two, Park County, two eighty-five, kind of just, kind of right before, ten miles before traffic. Fast five, I was about past, kind of the flats out there.
Right, right.
You weren't really ready for it in the flats. I've had one where I was driving along late at night, kind of. Hasting out a bit, also I see these two heads, they're just like standing in the road, they just flash by, oh, those were two elk, didn't even see them.
Oh, man.
One of my lot partners before, like twenty years ago, he hit. All the same town. Iron roof.
Oh, jeez.
And his kids were in the backseat, they were playing like some video.
We're ready for you.
Come on in, you're right over there with.
You look back, there's a roof on the car.
Oh, my gosh.
These kids are still like behind their video games.
Let us, let us know if anything important happens.
Covered in grass and everything. You know where I'm from? Yeah, I'm in Hampshire.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we used to count them. It used to be like, you know, hundred fifty moose heads, and there's like hundreds and hundreds. Well, yeah. Was there a seat because there's a high?
Yeah.
Their beams are low. It's too high. Elk, elk. Guys, I want to come through my windshield.
Yeah, that's the problem.
You have to pause the talk before you travel. He doesn't have that bad. Still learning. I think Thursday, Friday, so. Yeah, and shadowing people. Beachback installs. River Rogers. Yeah, a couple of years. I mean, they've, they've gotten more and more. Nice. Over those certain spots.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they, they can.
Yeah, my brother and. Also our dad.
Great cross of the other excellent, they kind of go down.
Yeah, I double tip.
Yeah.
Do some work and sees.
I feel like the deer are definitely.
Unless he's been able to do that for the past couple of years, so it's been nice.
No, it's kind of, I think, um, I haven't really had.
Yeah.
I was with deer, just an elk. You know, two or three, two or three. I haven't seen the elk really.
But, you know, do a Trader Joe's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we.
Does everyone know they're gonna leave like a little bit early to call up?
Yeah.
Someone told me that, yes.
Something better than around here.
Yeah, towards the end of the second part. I'm gonna try and get through it as quickly as I can. That's why I sent it to you guys ahead of time, so I can kind of just. Drew some of it and give feedback on the ones that you found to be most relevant and whatnot. Probably. She's on her way, she's on her way. Yeah, she's on her way, so I think. Should be walking in any minute.
I can start talking fast since she gets here.
Okay.
That's your best at, right?
Yeah. That was talking lawyer.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a work session for the Board of Trustees. The public is invited to attend. And the date is March thirteenth of twenty twenty-three. The time is five oh eight P M. And Paula, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Faye.
Here.
Trustee Cobb.
Here.
Trustee Hilton Henga.
Here.
Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee La Crezzi. Trustee Rowe.
Here.
Trustee Swisher.
Here.
Great. Now, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance. Of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with limitations, justice, and all. Thank you. Please silence your cell phones you have with you. Next, we have the agenda adoption. Does anyone have any changes in the agenda? Hearing, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Right, second. Okay, we have Rowe and Cobb. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so the next item is Board of Trustees' training. And this, this part of the training will be with Jeff Parker, who is here in person.
I am here in person. Well, thanks for having me, I appreciate it. So, I don't usually prepare a nasty PowerPoint presentation or anything. I hope you don't mind me not having great audio visual aids. What I do with a lot of my core training is I want to make sure, first of all, it's kind of back and forth, make sure, if you have any questions, just ask while we're discussing the issue with you. Hopefully I can answer them. If I can't, I'll get back to you. A lot of times, in the past, I have played, I sent you a memo, by the way, too. Hopefully you all got a pretty easy memo. At the end of the memo, there were a couple of links that you can get if you have an electronic copy, or you can just. Totally type them in, for a couple of videos that are powered by SIRS. One of them is a sort of. Stay, I think it's called staying within your authority, or operating within your authority by SIRS. It's pretty old. But it's still really relevant. And sometimes I start off my training by playing that video, but I figure we could save some time by me not doing that. It's six, seventeen minutes long. But it kind of goes through a little scenario of a new elected official joining a, like, sort of a, um, it's a, it's a made-up town, but. And it goes through some of the do's and don'ts of being an elected official. A lot of them are, is sort of designed from a insurance perspective to help you stay within the scope of your authority. And if you don't stay within the scope of your authority, there's consequences for that, for the town, and could be for you personally. And so, it's always kind of nice to know how that works. And the video is cheesy, but I think it's actually kind of a good video, so I'd recommend taking a peek at it. The other video I sent you, or I put in the memo, is about. Like an hour and twenty minutes long, I think. It's a pretty, it's a longer video. It's also for like introductory training for elected officials. And it's probably worth taking a peek at. And if you have any, if you ever do watch and you have any questions about what they're saying, let me know, I'd be happy to answer them. So what has happened in the video, I don't understand how that works, just let me know, I can answer, answer any questions for you. I thought I'd just start out with sort of a brief, just quick overview of, of what the town is. And it's in my memo, but you guys, you all are officials of a statutory town. In Colorado, we have. Hey, Gina.
Thanks, sorry.
Listen.
I thought it was five thirty. It's just basically Scott Roll, and you're fine.
I had to double check, too. I thought it was five thirty as well, so I drove extra fast.
Back and forth, so I get, my lesson learned is I really need to hold it maybe. Couldn't read it, so I'm not being offensive. If you start seeing things in red, in my view, just make sure, since things are changing all the time.
It was five thirty at one point, right?
It was.
Okay, good.
I could. I had to leave at seven.
Yeah, what I do is I provide excuses for officials when I have complete meetings. Yeah, no, I thought it was, we're good, we're good, okay. So there's basically three types of municipalities in Colorado. There's statutory towns, statutory cities, and home rural municipalities. And the, the real, the real difference between home rural jurisdictions and statutory jurisdictions is. Home rural jurisdictions get their authority from the Colorado Constitution. And they basically have the ability to have powers beyond statutory cities and towns. Which means they can, they basically have total authority to operate on and legislate and work within what's called a local, local matters. So the state can't come in and pass laws that govern purely local matters for a home rural municipality. They basically can't have a charter that gives them more authority than you have as a statutory town. Statutory towns and cities basically have to operate within the powers given to them by the general assembly and that are laid out in the statute. And so, in the memo, I do cite sort of various sort of examples of exactly what those powers are and where you can statute. If you have something, if you need to go to sleep quickly, you can find the statutes, try and figure all that out. But generally, sometimes I have clients say, well, you know, some jurisdiction did this. And I'd say, oh, yeah, it's because they're a home rural municipality. But, you know, you still have a fair amount of authority. If you ever wanted to be a home rural municipality, there's ways to do that. Takes an election and it's a process. And ultimately, the authority you have is governed by your charter. It's kind of like your constitution for your jurisdiction. And you could, you could basically expand your powers to be as big as they could be under the constitution, or you could keep them kind of. Smaller, depending upon how you want to end your charter, so. I cannot encourage you to do that. You guys operated pretty well as a statutory town for a long time. So that's always an option to go home rural at some point, if your electors. The big difference between a statutory town and a statutory city for me is, for me, I mean, there's differences, obviously more than that, but you're gonna do one reading. Of a ordinance, and statutory cities have to do two. So you basically can pass an ordinance on one reading, it goes into effect in thirty days after publication. Statutory cities have to do a first reading and then a second reading, and I don't know, I just think it's a waste of time, it's more publication costs, et cetera, so. It's kind of nice that you have a little more efficient route to pass your ordinances. Some general concepts for elected officials, just in general, this is kind of applied to any municipality, really, is that. You all only have authority when you're sitting at the table and when you're basically acting as a group. So a lot of times where I see liability coming, coming from is when you have a particular trustee or a city council member, or somebody who has. Particular issue that they are gonna fix, they are gonna take care of. And they basically go out and start doing things on their own, representing that they're living the town. And a lot of times it comes in the employment context. Where you have an individual member of a board of some size that they want to deal with an employment issue. You know, they, or they want to have a pet project they're just dealing with, and they start. Doing things, talking to contractors, I've had, I've had trustees talk to contractors, but talk to contractors. With job sites, work sites, tell them how, like, the way that's looking. Yeah, right, so that they, you know, you end up getting like a cost of money, you end up getting the contractors complaining. And then you also have it in employment context where somebody tries, so. Let's say you have a discounted employee, for example, whose supervisor may be legitimately. Expecting more from them. And then the employee will then decide that they don't want to do more. And then they will decide, I need to talk to somebody on the board. And then they'll come around the whole chain, and they'll try and get somebody's ear, and then the board member will start trying to fix it. And all of a sudden, you know, you have an issue with liability, it gets created that way, you know, following the right process. So it's a very common thing to happen when you have, and sometimes, sometimes it's legitimate complaint about a supervisor, but there's a process for that. If somebody supervises, not treating them appropriately, there's a process to go to the next level up, go to the city administrator, or come to me as the town attorney. So there's, it's in the, it's in the handbook, there's a way to deal with those things. So as a board member, your best approach is to basically refer them to their supervisor. You know, I can't, I can't have it this way, I'm sorry, it's not like, we're gonna do that, it's not the chain of command, you gotta, you gotta follow the right chain of command. And you have an H R individual. You know, John, right, so you can help people with that, so. Just kind of keep that in mind, because you always want to fix things, you always want to help, you always want to do the right thing. But ultimately, that's not your role as a board member. So always act as, as a body, unless there's been some specific authority delegated to you. So sometimes you can have an individual trustee who gets a, or we'd like you to go to this meeting and have a wish for beyond this committee or something. So then it's been like, it's been legitimately delegated to you, you represent the town in those situations. But just make sure that what you're doing is what the board has basically given you the authority to do. And so, and the key with that is that it create, if you don't, it creates liability for the town. And if you act outside the scope of your authority as an individual board member, you could lose two things. You could lose your immunity. Because as an elected official in Colorado, you have, you're protected by the Governmental Immunity Act, which is a robust act in Colorado. There's a pretty good job of preventing. Most claims against municipalities and government entities and also against their elected officials. Because if you, can you imagine if you basically took on personal liability for all your decisions on a board? You, you know, you're never gonna make everybody happy, right? There's always, if you make it half to feel happy, half the time, you're probably doing a pretty good job. And so, the immunity act is there to protect you, to encourage people to join boards, to, you know, to get elected and do their jobs. And then, as long as you're working within the scope of your authority, you're immune from liability generally. And then you also have insurance coverage, which is also fantastic, because to assert immunity, you need a lawyer to do that for you. And SIRS, which provides insurance for most of local, at least most municipalities in Colorado, will cover you, will cover your costs. The town will cover any deductible typically, and you won't be putting your family and your home and all your assets at risk. And it happens, though. Yeah, I mean, it happens, and what happens in, in some cases is that the, the main exception for the Governmental Immunity Act for individual board members, and it covers employees, too. So make sure you guys are all covered, too, as long as you're acting in the scope of your authority. But if you, if there is a claim that you're acting willfully and wildly, like intentionally trying to harm somebody, or intentionally outside the scope of your authority. That's when you can get, uh, you can get personal liability. That's when SIRS has kind of died coverage. There were SIRS died coverage for any of my clients, but I've had SIRS write letters saying that, depending upon what we find out in this case, you might not have coverage. And so, it's kind of, they'll, they'll cover you, and then at some point, maybe they'll decide they don't want to cover you. If you found, you've done something willfully, wildly, or if the verdict comes out, you know, in a way, it's unfavorable, you can end up facing personal liability. So definitely worth it to be acting in the scope of your authority. If you have any questions about that, just call me and I can help you make, make sure nothing you're doing is getting you outside those, outside those areas. So within that context, you don't have any authority to supervise any employees other than the appointed officials.
Generally.
And even your supervision for someone else is a little different, like supervising the judge, the judge has a certain degree of independence. So you don't really get to tell him what to do. But you certainly can decide whether or not to renew a contract with the judge. There's basically only certain grounds where you can actually cancel the contract during the term. Basically have to ask for certain types of misconduct, so generally, the judge is independent, that's what you want. You don't want your judge doing everything every council member tells the judge every day. I, I report to you, so I, I'm, I'm not an employee, I'm basically a contractor, I, I grow well. So, you know, any lawyer, any lawyer can be hired at any time by any client, generally. And so, I report to you, but I think I, I should have had this written down, I didn't get a chance to look at it, but I believe the town clerk is directly hired by. Board, and I think the finance director is as well. And I think that's it. Of course, the town administrator. Yeah, that's right, because she actually serves as an attorney going in front of this court, that's right. So those are the main officials that you basically have direct reporting to you. But even when it comes to day-to-day activities of your, of your municipal clerk and of your finance director, the day-to-day supervision is still handled by your town administrator. And so, you're not really dealing with, you know, day-to-day employee issues, you're dealing with just, is this person meeting your expectations? And do we want, and do we want to renew their appointments every year, basically? What else do I have as far as your general authority here? So that's kind of your, that's sort of my just general concepts for, for any, any elected official in any municipality in the state of Colorado. It's generally some important concepts to keep in mind. Any, any questions on that? Great, okay. So the real fun one is the open meetings law. That's kind of my next, so I, I feel, I'm just kind of, kind of walking through, I was gonna go through the open meetings law a little bit. I was gonna go through the Open Records Act a little bit. And I was gonna talk just briefly about conflicts of interest that might affect you. And then I was gonna give you a little rundown on the differences between. Legislative, quasi-judicial, and administrative acts, which is always a bit of a tricky point for people who are making these kinds of decisions. And there's some differences in how you can basically do things based upon what, what capacity you're acting in. So, open meetings law, general rule for, for you all is a quorum of three or more members. Three or more members constitutes a meeting when you convene to discuss public business. So any two of you generally can have a conversation about public business, if you'd like to. Any three of you cannot do that unless it meets the requirements of the meetings law, which is typically twenty-four hours' notice and open to the public. We've had some interesting case law recently, which, which has been dealt with in other jurisdictions. But Colorado is now sort of coming up more with the Jeffco School Board case, and have you heard about this? Where they call it, like, there's different names, where they call it a serial meeting, a hub-and-spoke meeting. It's basically a situation where you have two elected officials talk to each other about something, then that one goes to the next elected official to talk to them. They go to the next, they kind of just working through a serial fashion, or one person's the contact for every member. They're having their discussions, they're making their decisions, kind of outside the notice public meeting. Then they come into a public meeting and they kind of just vote, and they're already figured out behind closed doors. So. That is. Is, so I think it's not. That's very risky. I, I think if you already made your decision, and you do it that way, you already decided things, you come in, you just vote, that's gonna fall under the Jeffco case. You're gonna basically not be permitted to do that, it's gonna be overturned. The question is. In other contexts, if you basically are just having some conversation, I'm, I'm gonna talk to, the mayor's gonna talk to, to you, and then the mayor's gonna talk to you a little bit. And then just kind of get a feel for things, and we're coming, you're gonna have a full conversation in the meeting. Nobody's hub-and-spoken it intentionally, no decision's been made behind the scenes, you're just having conversations about interesting issues. You know, I think that there's a certain, there's gonna be a spectrum on that, where like, some of that's gonna maybe be fine, and some of that's maybe not gonna be fine. And one of the problems with this issue is, is that if you have, you know, if trustee Cobb, you know, talks to trustee Hilton Henga, and all of a sudden. You don't know what's gonna happen after you've had that conversation, your trustee Cobb goes to talk to somebody else. And you, you're violating the law, but the trustee Cobb, by talking to everybody else afterwards, makes that a violation. And so, I think that my advice is, is sort of, there's a, some common sense to the, you know, as a lawyer, I can always just say no to everything. And I think, I, that's not really my job, that's the most cautious lawyer, who basically never get anything done, right? So I try and say, with this situation, I just say, you know, use your common sense. If you think that it's being done to make a decision or to lobby you outside of the public eye, maybe not the best conversation to be having. You're really supposed to be doing most of your business here. Here, in the meeting after it's been published, yeah.
Jeff, a quick question, um, so does that pertain to staff, too, as far as conversations with staff?
No, so. The, the, the rule only applies to members of what's called a local public body, which is elected members of the board trustees. And your boards, the planning commission, strike preservation commission. So it's only applies among them. So, yeah, you can talk to staff, but once again, when you talk to staff, needs to be, you need to be careful, because you shouldn't be to have a direct conversation with staff without. An administrator being aware of it, or you, or that's our standard thing that you do in your role for some commission that you're dealing with, so. Yeah, so try, staff, the top ones, the sounds all they want. And you can talk to staff all you want, as long as it's sort of with the knowledge of the town administrator, you're not interfering with staff's day-to-day operations. So that's the, that's sort of the basic rule for the open meetings law, and then the next level down is, that pretty much applies to all electronic communications, too. So emails are meetings, probably texts are meetings, phone calls together are meetings, so if you have. And the problem with emails is, I think maybe ten years ago, we were, our firm was advising, emails are more like letters. You can write a letter, and then a letter to somebody, and then like, that's not a meeting. But I think an email's the faster way of sending letters, frankly. And, but the, the general assembly said that emails can constitute meetings, even when they're not happening, you know, at the same time. You can basically email one day, and then two days later, some mess replies, and it's going to three or more of you, and you're kind of engaging in a back and forth. That's gonna be a meeting. And there's no way for this, for the public to be part of that. They don't get to be participating and kept by notice of that. So basically, my rule on emails is limit them to very mundane administrative matters. And the open meetings law was changed a couple of years ago to allow for that. So you can basically send emails without them being meetings to everybody on the board, everybody on other board. If it deals with like scheduling issues, from administration, very, very low-level administrative matters. I said delivering some documents, but you can't be engaging in any kind of discussion. So keep that in mind, and on the other side, emails, texts are all public records, generally. There'll be some, there'll be some exceptions, too. So I always remind my board members and officials that, you know, anything that you send in an email, anybody can probably get. And so, I've had some open records act requests where, you know, we basically get the request, and the way we usually handle them is we submit them. Paula is your custodian of records, generally. She can work with I T, if they want emails regarding this topic, I, I T can put in certain search terms for certain things people are looking for. And, oh, man, sometimes, we have gotten back like literally fifty thousand emails on something. And they can be very expensive and time-consuming, but, and you know, you go through them, and there's some time, we'll, as your attorney, depending upon the topic of the, of the request. There will be emails that'll be protected by the attorney-client privilege. There's other privileges, too, like the work product privilege, delivered process privilege, these can all apply in certain contexts, certain emails. And so, we don't release those. And then, once in a while, I get an email, and I'll see like, oh, boy, that council member did not want that email to be read by the public, right? Like, there's nothing I can do about that, I'm sorry. So it gets released, and so, keep that in mind.
Jeff, if we, if we delete an email, is it truly gone? Or has it remained discoverable in some fashion?
So I, I think the, the, I think that nothing's truly gone anymore in our electronic world, I probably assume that. I don't know how you handle your I T system and how things get purged and.
I, I know from past experiences that, that there is a way to recover deleted emails. Where there's been records requests, and so, yeah, sure.
Yeah, and, and she has, some people say, oh, I'm gonna send it on my personal email account, I'm, I'm just using my, my personal phone. But it's, I think that in some cases, depending on what we're talking about, you can, that can, if you're doing public business on a personal email account and using a personal phone for texting, that's still discoverable. And, and, and not to get in too much, too much of the weeds here, but. The custodian of records has the duty to release. The custodian of records has the duty to release any public records that are releasable that are in her custody 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 and control. And so what'll happen sometimes in some situations when a account will will say, hey, here's the request we got. And also counsel, we have some clients who still don't have their own official emails. And so I'll say, you know what, can you guys, can you go through emails and get us everything that you got? They'll go through their personal emails. They'll be pulling out the personal texts. They'll be pulling it out. Somebody says, no, I'm not gonna give it to you. Well, okay, I mean, I can't make anybody do anything. You can call up. So we just give what we can give, but if the party wants to file a lawsuit. They have a good argument. They have access to that to get it, you know, court make you give it to them. So. Don't think by just changing your couch, you're basically protecting something. And I always advise my clients. If you're doing town business, talking about town business, use your town email accounts. Um, I assume you all have private phones. Probably you don't have town phones.
They're they're the personal phones.
Yeah, so you would, so your text messages on town business could be discoverable at some point. So keep that in mind. Hopefully there's nothing in there that anybody is gonna be too worked up to get or anything, but just keep it in mind. I always just think when I'm an attorney, I'm writing. See, when I write memos to my clients or emails and emails to my clients. The client, you all as a board, so that's that's the the next topic. Is uh all my correspondence to you all is basically attorney client. And we don't put attorney client pros on our memos or on our emails. Because uh everything should be, and if we have one that doesn't say that, one that does say that, well, why did this one say it, so it doesn't say it? I mean, all attorney client correspondence to the board is privileged, even when you think, oh, who cares if the town sees this? Or help sees this. I just think that everything should be privileged, because it's all legal advice, whether it's on a really, really. Sensitive topic or whether it's on something pretty basic. Uh, but you as a board, you have the right to to vote. To waive the. Please, anything that I provide to you. So like the client has the privilege, not me, the attorney. And so anything I say ultimately can be released to the public or whatever, uh, if you agree to do that. But the key message here is. Only you as a board can do that via a vote. Um, and so when I write anything, I'm always thinking, well, you know, maybe the public might see this. I'm trying to make sure I I'm I'm professional and. I don't wanna be disparaging anybody, even though I'm thinking about that in my head. So I I think that it's just. Uh, a good practice to be in when you're in public service, keep keep your discourse. High, because it always comes back to bite you if you don't. So, um, yeah. And so as far as like, you know, I know like sometimes staff will ask me, well, can I put this in the public packet? And Paul, you always are good about checking in on that. And I, my answer almost always is no. But what what staff can do or you can do is. They can repackage something I give them, like maybe I'll give a memo to Sean on something important about public works issue and. And he can say, well, he can go go to the public and here's what we're, here's what we're doing based on legal advice. You know, they wanna say our attorney said exactly this, but you can, public planning department can ask me questions. And they can come, okay, you know, the zoning needs to be done in this. Here's how you do the zoning this way. Here's, here's, you're giving advice to the public. But you you aren't really saying that this is the town attorney's statement. Here's what he's telling me, because I always wanted, because that would be used against us. Somebody wants to fight something and I've warned you, say, you know, say for example, another example is I'm here to basically. I'm here not to make you do anything. I'm not here to tell you what you should do. I'm here to basically lay out what the law is as best I can, because the laws, as you've probably noticed, never perfectly clear or not very often. And then you can basically assess the risks and decide what's the best for the town, right? So um there's some cases where I'm like, boy, this is super risky. You really wanna be careful. I wouldn't do that. That's pretty obvious. But a lot of times it's like, here's the benefits of this, here's the benefits of that. You wanna go down here, it's pretty, it's getting riskier. And here's the, here's the weaknesses in doing that. For example, I try and problem weaknesses or the issues you might see. But the public, if somebody gets a hold of that. That's really difficult for me then to argue in court, you know, it it gives them a roadmap sometimes of things they could do to challenge your decisions or. Planning issues and, but I wanna make sure that you have an understanding of what you're deciding and the consequences. So. Um, that's clear. My my memo, something, you know, and sometimes I always get pretty worried and we cite the law a lot. I always tell my associates and I've still, I created myself, but I say, I want my clients to know what the answer is at the beginning of the memo. Because nobody wants to start, I I tell them, it's not a mystery novel. You don't get the answer at the end, right? I want like, you know, and and nuances can come in the body, right? The main answer should be at the beginning. And then the nuances can be in the body of email, because we need it ourselves. We're, a lot of times we're doing the analysis, we're writing a memo. So this will help us, you know, in another six months, something comes up, oh, what did we think about that? Oh, that's the case. So I don't wanna be overly. Legalistic with you, but I wanna make sure you got the meat potatoes as well as the quick answer too. That's how we try to do our memos. Um, so please complain if I'm not giving you clear memos. Um, okay, back to the open meetings law. Um. So the the main rules are if three or more members of the trustees are talking about public business. Anything related to the town, it needs to be noticed twenty four hours in advance. And and uh you need to have it over to the public. Um, what are the issues with this twenty four hour notice? Uh, is well, what happens when we wanna add stuff to the agenda? What happens if there's an emergency? So the twenty four hours notice is basically the default rule that if you provide twenty four hours notice, that's deemed to be sufficient. So if there's a true emergency, um, you can put something on your agenda. Shorter, in a shorter timeframe than twenty four hours, but I always want my. Boards to basically explain the reason why it couldn't have been put on earlier and there'd be a reason for the emergency, for the record. So then you can basically say, if we don't do this tonight, we're losing a deal with a contractor and we're gonna pay an extra seventy five thousand dollars. We didn't know about this until we got the response. At ten this morning, something like that. So then you're basically given the grounds for why you're doing something less than twenty four hours. Um, there is one exception that I I I allow in some cases, but it's very rare. Is that if you're in the middle of a meeting and a legal issue comes up and we need to have a legal conversation about something, uh, depending upon the importance of it. Uh, and if it can't be put off, we can do, can go into an executive session for legal advice. Because truly no decisions made in an executive session with legal advice is confidential anyway, so it wouldn't really be publicized. I don't like to do that, but it's an option. If people are getting really wrapped around the axle and I can't fix it just in public. You can always go in and have a legal advice executive session. But I don't really wanna encourage that, because someday of course it's gonna tell you, can't even do that, right? So, but not, not yet. So I think it's helpful for you to know that you still can get good legal advice during a meeting in confidence if you need it. Um, let me see, what else do we have here? Uh, talked about emails. Okay, so and and you, as you know, there are exceptions to the open meetings law requirement, and those are for executive sessions. And the statute, the open meetings law has certain executive session exceptions that can be done. In uh in a private meeting outside the public eye, you can only hold exec- executive sessions in regular meetings or in special meetings. You can't do them in work sessions. So um, if you need executive session, you can, and it's gonna be on a work session night, you just do a special meeting before. Or a special meeting after it, put the executive session in there and then hold your work session or vice versa. Um, and of all the grounds for executive session, there, I mean, there's like six or seven, I think seven, I. Look at that right, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yeah, seven. Um, they're all recorded. And you keep a recorder of your executive session other than for a free client advice. So when you go to executive session for personnel matter or for negotiations or anything like that, the tape recorder stays playing. But it's, it's a private tape recording.
Paul, for ninety days, I believe, under our record retention policy.
Um, and if somebody wants to challenge it, you know, there's a potential that that recording can end up in court with a judge listening to or something and deciding whether or not you guys stay. Within the topic of the executive session. Um, if something gets talked about in executive session that's not within that topic or that. Um, shouldn't have been, should have been in public. Uh, you, the court will basically hold the session invalid and it could be released to the public. So you always wanna be pretty careful with those. But I don't like having the train client privilege sessions recorded because. You should be able to talk to your attorney without having any recorded date of it ever. Um, I think once or twice I might have had the tape recorder kept on when there's some really crazy stuff going on that I'm a little bit worried about somebody saying I'm gonna say something different. Just to cut out my own CYA, not for you all, but I've had a couple of clients where I don't know if I trust what's gonna happen with this. With this, my advice is executive session, I've actually asked them to keep it going and it's up to the board still to decide that. But I think we've tried to tip off for all of ours of being a business, I think. Yeah, so, yeah, another point, if you go, if you go into executive session, you got to a two thirds majority vote. So it's not a fifty fifth, uh, fifty or more votes. And um. Typically, when we come into executive session, they recommend the tape recorder be turned off. You don't really vote, because you really can't vote in executive session. Everybody just agrees to turn the tape recorder off. So yeah, another point I should make too, executive sessions are for discussions. Um, and for giving staff direction, you can give me direction. There's a little bit of confusion sometimes between. Well, okay, here we are. We wanna decide what to do about buying this piece of property, for example. What do we wanna pay for? If we wanna pay. Hundred thousand dollars. We don't want that to go out in the public, right? Okay, we give Lisa or whoever's involved or Jeff. Uh, go and negotiate for a hundred thousand dollars for this piece of property. You don't need to have a vote, raise your hands, everybody can all agree. This is all agreed, yes. That's just direction to me. And ultimately, when we come back to actually buy the property. You actually have to do that in public. So you'll still get a chance to make the formal vote on what you basically give a direction on in the executive session. With personnel matters, it's also, I also have a little interesting issue because personnel matters involve typically pretty private issues. And I do not like having disciplinary matters done in public. And a personnel matter, so you could only have a personnel matter when it deals with one or more employees. You can't have a executive session personnel matter to just talk about policies or, you know, it has to be for a specific employee. And then in that case, you have to give that employee notice. Um, of the executive session, and that employee that has a right to require that it happen in public. And so almost always the employees prefer to have it in private. Um, once in a while, the employee wanted to be in public, and so if the employee says, I want this in public. You then have the option of saying, well, we're not gonna do it. Or doing it in public, but you can't have the conversation in an executive session. If the employee says, I'm fine with you doing an executive session, then you have, then you still have to do a two thirds majority vote, go in executive session. And you have the option of bringing the employee in or not. It's up to you who comes to the executive session. And depending upon the situation, you may wanna hear from the employee, you may not wanna hear from the employee. Um, and and just we'll just, we do it, you know, we'll deal with it as it comes up. But, you know, most of the time you aren't dealing with a lot of just individual employee issues, so hopefully it won't be. Much of an issue for you, but sometimes you will get confused that they can have executive sessions for personnel matters that don't deal with an employee. It's only for employees. You wanna talk about policies, anything else, Skype it out. Yeah.
Does that apply to appointees as well?
Yeah, well, appointees are employees too.
Right, okay.
Same thing. So if you had a concern with. Your town administrator, she would have the option to have it in public or or private, she have the option to require you to do it in public. And if she doesn't, then you can decide whether to bring her in or not, just like anybody else. It gets a little confusing for sure. Um, and I usually provide the notice to the employee, kind of give a little rundown, here's what it's gonna be about. And, you know, your choice, let me know before this this date. It usually, almost always ends up being on a private. And then the issue that comes up in those situations is, well, how do we? If you wanna discipline somebody, for example, how do we do that? And, you know, sometimes we'll have like the decision made in public after the executive session. But I really, I really don't like making those public. So sometimes would you be able to give the direction to somebody? To handle like, give direction to me or Lisa, direct you to do this. And then Mel will take care of the issue, not in the public eye. Because I always get concerned with the balancing of the open meetings law requirements and the. Constitutional privacy interests or potential interests of your employees. And I really don't wanna, I I. This is maybe revealing a little too much of my legal strategy, but I would prefer to violate the open meetings law. Than somebody's constitutional privacy rights, which will have bigger implications for the town. So sometimes you gotta pick the, what, what you wanna, you wanna risk for. Okay, so, um. But but there's always ways to deal with it and hopefully we never have to get in a situation like that, but I'll I'll explain it all to you if that comes up.
Yeah, quick with the um, um, is it executive session? Meetings, and I think I know the answer, but uh, there's been several times I will be in a general meeting and I'm like. Whatever happened with that one thing we discussed during that executive session? I don't wanna mention that during employee staff interaction, right? Because we talked about it during an executive session. Just make a mental note and just email like, Lisa, directly, see what happened?
Probably, probably the best way to do it is check in with the individual staff member or me or whoever was involved, hey, what's going on with that? Um, or, yeah, that's probably the best way to do it. Or you could request another executive session to get it out, you know, get another, you know, summary of what happened.
But we're not supposed to reach out to, according to you guys, the staff members without asking Libby or Lisa, right? Like, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I assume, but probably if an executive session involving like a, like, like. Lisa could probably be the one to contact, what happened with that?
Okay, okay.
Right? Yeah, not not the individual staff.
Oh, okay. I think like if we like, there's something with public works, we'd be like, oh, Sean, what happened with that? But we'd never just go to Sean.
Yeah, I'm not totally, you know, I I think that's generally the better policy is is to work through your town administrator when you wanna deal with anything staff's aware of. But if, for example, you're in executive session and Sean's like, I'm gonna provide you an update with this, you know, or. Or you're, you're in charge of dealing with this one issue in public work somehow, you can certainly have that conversation as long as it's like been permitted ahead of time. I would say in almost every situation, you're gonna be working through town administrator, because when I, the clients are all, I. There's like a life cycle, I swear on municipalities, where like, there's like crazy times where you have like, the attorney fees are high. And like, that's where we make our money. And like, and like, stuff's going on. And then there's a time where everything's calm. And it's just rolling along and it's great. And I feel like when the crazy times, it's always when. Elected officials are getting involved with individual staff members or they're stepping outside their lane and they aren't cooperating well, even when they don't. You're gonna have things where you're not gonna agree with one of your co-trustees. And that person won't accept the result and they just try and undermine it from behind the scenes. And I see it happening all the time, like. You can lose a battle, you know, and you have to, you have to at some point be able to just move on and say, that democracy works. The council members are, are are trustees, or whatever kind of side you're dealing with, are getting involved. In administering things and going around the town administrator or their, or the staff is going around the administrator and you lose that chain of command. We're not the military, but like, that's, that's really, if that starts to happen, I'm like, oh. I know that there's gonna, that's when they're, that's when the issues are always happening. You're gonna have, you know, random lawsuits that have nothing to do with that. Right? I think that's the most, for me, that'd be my number one, my number one like message to you all is that. If you can all work together cohesively when you disagree and you can all work through your town administrator and she can work through you. Uh, and then she runs staff, you will find that the town functions smoothly. Um, especially kid. Um, the minute people are trying to do their own things, you're not getting along, you're not trusting each other. Somebody gets upset about something and they wanna do their own thing, things just start to fall apart. Um, and it's, it's, there's always, luckily, it's not all my clients all at the same time, but they're just the, we call it the silly season too, like when election season's coming. Things just start to happen, right? Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's like, things just start to happen. People look like there's, there are important issues or. Single issue candidates, for example. I don't see anybody here on this board. But we have, we have like a single issue, is one thing that they care about, nothing else for the municipality. I mean, all they care about is this. And then they sort of disrupt the rest of the duties of the council and the board and just, so yeah, I would, I would. I would definitely be careful with that. So. Um, anything else on open meetings laws? I'm gonna go to open records act next.
I'd just like to um say something that I remember from years ago, the wise um trustee Jenkins said. Um, that the public, the public deserves to see us deliberate in public.
Yeah.
And and so that's why we shouldn't be, you know, trying to decide everything ahead of time and then come in and vote. Um, because we, we should be deliberating here.
Yeah, and that, that mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, good advice, good advice. Well, that actually really goes to the, one of the other topics, which is legislative, quasi judicial, administrative roles you just be playing. So I'll do a quick open records act and I'll move on to that, which. Is really relevant to what you just said, Libby. Well, the open records act, I think I kind of mentioned it before, is, you know, the general rule and and the. The um, sort of the default rule under the open records act is that all records created by the town, all records of town. Has has in its custody and control are public records. And therefore the public has a right to see them. That's kind of the starting assumption. And then the question becomes, how do we, what ones are not public? And there's, okay, case starting over this forever, but generally, um, any writings. Any of this, the the word is, all writings made, maintained or kept by a public body are public records. Um, and it includes correspondence among you all, I'm saying, so be careful with your correspondence. I mean, you can correspond. You just have to be careful with it. Um, and you do most of your corresponding in a meeting. There are certain exceptions which include attorney client privilege. Um, discussions and most of my correspondence with you is gonna be, if it's in writing, will be via memos. Once in a while, I mean, I'll actually also send emails with legal advice, but I generally don't send it to all. But I generally don't send it to all the board at once, usually goes to the administrator, or a staff member involved with the issue, like planning or something. Uh, all of that communication is attorney-client privilege, that's all protected generally. Um, but, uh, other two, there's, one other main sort of privilege is basically work product, which is. Anything that's prepared by staff to help you all make a decision on some item. And so you can get some guiding documents, it can, staff can be working out memos for you to help you decide an issue with a planning issue. That can be considered to be work product. Most of the time, that stuff is provided publicly, because mostly comes in the planning conference, you have a planning report. That'll be the kind of, um, material that'll generally be shared with the public, but you have gotten items from your planning director. That's basically supposed to be kept confidential, here's what, here's, here's how the negotiation, you're going on this deal. This is gonna help guide you on a decision you're gonna make regarding some kind of a deal, that could be work product. So if Paul gets a request, we basically will work through it, and, uh, review it in my office, and then provide a response. Um, and the, the only problem, the big problem with open record act requests is that they just take time. And the default rule under, under the record act is that you have three business days to provide the material. And you can get an extension for another seven business days. Um, but some of these things take even longer than that, and in most cases, we're able to work it out with the requesting party, because they understand that. But, um, it's nice to basically be organized, to use your own email address, your work email addresses, or your town email addresses for town business. We can find everything in one place, don't have to go looking everywhere for it, it's what we can do to make it easier to provide the material, and we view it, it's great. So, yeah, not much else on Cora, um, other than just. Always assume what you're writing is gonna be public information in most cases. Um, and one, one more before I get to this quasi judicial legislative issue, which is conflicts of interest. Uh, the, there's, there are, I have a ton of stuff in the memo on conflicts of interest, but. It's always a little confusing as to whether there is really a conflict or there isn't a conflict, but I always kind of, sort of like, also a rule of thumb. Is that if you're thinking to yourself, wow, is this gonna, is this situation I'm in somehow. It feels a lot right, if you feel like maybe it could be interpreted to be a problem, you're probably safer recusing yourself. Probably, happy to answer any questions you have, I never, I, I don't represent you individually. But I'm happy to give you some guidance on whether there's a conflict interest in what you're dealing with, um, but. There's two kinds of conflicts of interest that are kind of two levels of it, one of them is, is there an actual conflict? And is there an appearance of a conflict? And then the rule is, an appearance of a conflict can actually be a conflict, so you can, even if there is no conflict directly. If the facts in certain hasn't looked bad enough. To appear to maybe be a conflict, then that can be a conflict because of the appearance, just, you want to make sure the public doesn't. Look at you and think there's a conflict, and it's a bit of a weird concept, but. I always think that like, if you, if you're getting into the weeds and you're trying to find the technical reason why it's not a conflict, you, you probably just should recuse yourself. Or if, if, if for some reason like you, 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 you just gotta be careful with this. Um, and so what do you do, so the two general rules of conflicts are, you generally cannot engage in a financial transaction with someone you supervise. Or something you're gonna take a, some official action on. So if any, if, if there's basics for employees, you can't supervise somebody and then do, do some kind of a. A deal for them to fix your car or something, that's pretty easy for employees. For a board member, you can't render a decision, um, that basically would benefit. You don't really, I guess you don't really supervise anybody, it's more for employees in that situation. For board members, it's basically you can't perform an act affecting your economic interest, uh, a family member's economic interest, or some kind of personal interest that you have. The personal interest one is pretty, pretty vague, but it's, once again, it's like, if you feel like, oh man, this is gonna be personally benefiting. Me somehow, like, I'm, I'm voting to, that the town paid for a sewer line on my street, instead of, instead of. Requiring all the homeowners to pay an assessment for it, that would be something you probably want to accuse yourself of. So, um, but conflicts can get tricky, so if you have a conflict, what do you do? The rule is, and you're gonna have an issue in front of you as a board. You basically declare the conflict, you say, here's, here's the conflict that I perceive myself having. Then you recuse yourself, I'm gonna accuse myself, and then you actually leave the room. Because you don't want to be sitting, you don't even be anywhere, anywhere, and, and I guess the third rule is, you cannot be trying to influence the decision. So, even if you create a conflict and accuse yourself, if you basically lobbied your board members the week before. That's a violation of the conflict of interest rules. And so if you're sitting in the room and you're kind of like, you know, you just totally remove yourself, then we usually call you back in when it's all, so. Um, the other final rule on conflicts is, is that you generally are required to vote if you don't have a conflict. So you can't generally just, once in a while, I'll, I'll, I'll have a, official basis, I abstain. Why are you abstaining, you know, well, they still want a deal, you know, then I don't know what to say, right? You gotta vote, so, and some of my, some of my towns have a rule that basically. Not voting when you have no conflict is a violation of the act of trust. And so, um, but there's no rule in your code on that, um, I don't really know what the consequences are, you have no provision for that, but. You generally are supposed to be voting when you don't have a conflict, if you, unless you have a conflict. And as you all know, you're, though, you're a little different, in some, most municipalities, it's the mayor does vote, other than in a tie, so, um.
Question.
Yeah.
What if you get to a tie and it's on the mayor, but the mayor actually has conflict of interest?
If she wouldn't be able to vote, you have a tie and you'd be tired?
So then what happens to?
Does it fail?
It fails, yeah, so ties fail.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and, and there are a few issues, a few, a few things that have to have more than a. Yeah, a few, a few should have to have more than a majority vote, um, certain things require a majority vote of the entire board of trustees. And I don't have my list in front, I just can't remember where they are, but I'll let you know if that comes up, but, um, yeah, no, so a tie is, is a, is a, is a.
Okay, uh, okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, um, how are we doing for time, I'm almost, we're almost at the hour, okay, so.
That's my fault, sorry.
No, no, it's, it's good, I actually thought it was good or not happening, I was trying to have a, too much time. Um, I'll go through the, to the main, the last main issue that I think people get confused about. So, which is the difference between legislative acts, quasi judicial acts, and administrative acts. And depending upon, and the real issue here is the difference between quasi judicial and legislative acts. Administrative acts are mostly gonna be handled by your staff, yeah.
Sorry, I was, before we went to that section, there was something else reading this that, instead of kind of raise, make sure I'm understanding it personally?
Yeah.
That was the, um, preconceived views, or a bit?
Yeah.
It seems like, I don't know, we kind of touched on this, I was just like, we, we're, our town is basically the size of my high school, like. Right, so you're gonna have preconceived views, and to a certain extent, and we're all opinionated individuals, so is it more of if you have that? And you think it's going to get in the way of its personal check, then you recuse her, or, or, otherwise. You bring it up during the meeting or during a public hearing, what your view might be? And let them address it publicly, and therefore it's out in the open, is that?
So I think it depends upon the, 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 whether it's quasi judicial or legislative. So it's a perfect question for this topic, so I'll, I'll answer that, well, so. So for legislative acts, those are the kind of acts that are, um, like, uh, affecting broad swaths of the town. Policy type decisions, like passing laws, you know, passing ordinances that apply to the whole town. Um, like, big rezonies, you know, like, stuff like that, that's all, that's all like a legislative act, that's, that's like. Quasi judicial acts are when you're basically rendering a, you're applying, you're applying your town code, like the law in your town code. To a specific situation, and you're deciding whether or not to approve an individual's application. So that could be typically, it's like liquor hearings, or, um, planning decisions like, um, approving developments. Um, stuff like that, that would be quasi judicial, and the differences are, in a quasi judicial role. You're basically serving like a judge, to quasi judicial, you're rendering, you're, you're interpreting the law. And you're applying this person's facts to that law, and you're saying, based on this, on these criteria, you meet them or you don't meet them. You're approved or not approved, and you aren't bringing in your personal feelings, like, I don't believe alcohol is, is good. I think alcohol is bad for everybody, therefore I want to basically never approve any alcohol, uh, any license ever. That situation that you're in, you can't, that's a preconception, I really call it a bias. And so when you're dealing with quasi judicial matters, you have to be a neutral arbiter, a neutral judge, and, uh, and. Not be biased, not prejudge the situation, render decision entirely upon, um, what's being presented to you. In, in front of you in the meeting, so the fact that you know the area, or you know. What the building looks like or something, that's fine, everybody knows that, that's not gonna, that's, that's fine, but you have to render your decision on the, on the evidence given to you, at the hearing itself. So quasi judicial hearings are on the record, someone wants to appeal it, they basically appeal it to the district court. And then we get, they get a copy of the whole record, all the documents that are filed, and that's the kind of thing where the, the court would then look at it and say, okay, get this. Judicial body, apply the right law to the facts and make the right decision. So, so if you have like a preconception of something, if you, you say, hey, you know, I. You say you're building your house over here, and you're looking for approval of this development application, I'm just giving you an example, and. You know, but I think your roof is higher than thirty feet, thirty feet's the maximum height limit. You, I mean, you could say that, that would be okay, you're, you're, you're not, you're not like basically saying, I'm not gonna approve your decision because I don't like you, right? So, so you can't have bias, you can't prejudge, um, you basically need to make your decisions, oh, and you can't have ex party contacts, that's a big one. So, in a quasi judicial setting, you can't go out and like investigate the matter yourself. You know, I'll have people in the middle of the hearing, and they'll say, well, I'm looking on Google right now, and it says, this is how we're, and like, oh, no. No, you, basically like you're, you're having the parties present their case, and you had to decide on what they present. But the fact that you know things already about the town, like you said, the fact that you're aware of what it looks like, or the fact that you're aware of. How many liquor spurs are on the street for a liquor license, that's okay, as long as it doesn't, um. As long as it doesn't bias you in a way that you can't be fair to the people who are in front of you, and you can't apply your, apply the facts to the. Facts of the law, that makes sense? Yeah, sort of, okay, so I'll make the next part though.
Just follow on on that, so some, somebody knows that, say, Peter said, I think your roof is higher than it should be.
Right.
Can, is, could they not have a perception of bias?
Well, I think we should, I think we should say, I, I'd like you to explain that to me, you know, explain why I'm seeing that here, and so you say like, um. But what you don't want to be doing is coming to give a present, coming to, you know, present their case, and the whole time you're sitting there saying, that roof's higher than thirty feet, I know it's higher than thirty feet. I'm gonna rule against them, you know, I, I, I think if you, you need to be, you need to be able to say like, hey, I'm gonna reveal to the board that it looks to me like it's higher than thirty feet. I did to explain why it's not, and give them a chance to respond, based on information that you already know. So, if you have, if you have knowledge of something in a quasi judicial matter that's relevant. To the, because of what, because you have not investigated, it's because you happen to know it, or you, you, you saw it. You need to present that, say, okay, I, I'm gonna reveal, I'm gonna tell them, here, I, I know this issue, I want it to be addressed. Um, and talk to them beforehand maybe too, if like, if I'm trying to do it, because you don't want to have. You don't want your decision to be made on something you're just keeping to yourself, right? But if, but if that, if what you, that's not really, that's not really a bias conflict, that's basically a fact, okay? I think a bias is more, like I said, like, you don't think that development should be over twenty feet. But the law allows it for over thirty feet, or up to thirty feet, you can't be really against it because you don't think it should be higher than twenty, that makes sense?
And, can I ask?
Yeah.
Sure, one thing that I think is helpful too, if, if there's ever any question about that, and it's not answered by staff. You can always, you know, during that hearing, you can always say, well, I really wish we had. Corroborated the height of that building, and I would like the city engineer, or I would like. You know, the planning director to go out and measure that for the record, so you can do something like that. The other thing is, I've also seen it, and I don't, I was gonna ask you about that here in Colorado, but. Like in Nebraska, if it was valuable to visit a site, and everyone wanted to go, and people were talking about how they wanted to go. We would sometimes schedule as part of that site visit for everyone, so you could do it. As a group, at least, I've done that a couple of times, but.
Yeah, so, yeah, that, that's come up before other clients of mine, and so I generally discourage site visits. Because you need to be able to control the conversation there, it's open to the public, and some site visits can be, are you, can you all go at the same time? Um, are you just gonna go and look, or are you gonna have somebody there telling you things?
Notice it too.
Right, exactly, and so, I think these days, people have a lot of tools to show you where a site looks like. You know, and so I'm not, I'm not necessarily, I, I'm not, they're not prohibited. I would just say they have to be in unique situations, really need to go to the site to see something or else, because I think there's, there's pitfalls to do it as well. Yeah.
I ask one thing with that, so, um, what if information you provided? Way things are written sometimes isn't very clear, like you were saying earlier, well, sometimes is. I mean, you get to decipher it and take it for how you, I guess, see it, you know, some things are very black and white, but then there's other things, I think. That aren't always super clear, and so in a situation like that, let's say we get information for something that comes up. But some of the information that's provided to us doesn't really outline one way or another, which would, or it's up to your interpretation of how you could. View it, so in that sense, um, let's say somebody challenges the outcome because you said yes, or you said no to it. But the information provided really didn't say like, oh, you should be basing your vote, um, based off of. You know, these pre, pre-recs that have already been, you know, within our policy or whatever, blah, blah, but if our information isn't quite clear. So I've found contradicting things between, you know, on certain topics that we've had before for certain things, and. And it is a little bit up to your interpretation, so then I'm like, well, how do you?
Yeah.
I think that's, that's a, a staff responsibility to come back with the facts for you, if it's like a planning and zoning thing or something like that.
This is a past thing, and I wouldn't say it was a staff thing, I think it was just in general, it's multiple entities, so, different, yeah, it wasn't like a. A B V.
Lack of information.
Yeah, 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 it was just different entities, with a different, they each had their own version of what was written.
Oh.
And it didn't really mesh, and so you're like, well, what are we talking about?
Yeah, well, I mean, welcome to a trial or, or any kind of case, I think, I think number one thing to do is that. You know, when you're sitting as a, uh, quasi judicial body, you have the authority to ask all the questions you want to ask.
Sure.
So you can ask questions, try and, try and figure it out if it's a factual issue, try to figure out which one you think is maybe more accurate than the other. But ultimately, you're gonna have to use your best judgment.
Right, okay.
Decision, and so when you're, when you're appealed, if, say, someone doesn't like your decision, and they appeal it to this court.
Yeah.
Um, the standard review is, did you abuse your discretion?
Sure, sure.
It's not just like, were you, were you right or wrong, it's like, you have to basically screw it up.
Right.
Um, and, and so abuse of discretion is a pretty high bar.
Right.
Um, it, it certainly happens, but, you know, if, if there's a reasonable interpretation. Um, if the facts, if the evidence admitted in the hearing could reasonably interpreted, interpreted to support your decision.
Hmm.
Then, uh, the court will uphold your decision.
Gotcha.
Yeah, if there's basically no evidence to support your decision, and you kind of did something.
Yeah.
Out there, and then, then you, so, yeah, that's part of your job, and I know some of these, some of the criteria are, you know, does it, um. Is it, does it, uh, is it compatible with the neighborhood? I mean, that's pretty open ended, right, so, right, yeah, you know, and so that's a decision for you to make, right, and so that's.
Yeah, it's just part of the process, unfortunately, yeah.
So, I think, I think the key here is, is though, is to compare the difference between quasi judicial and legislator. So when you're acting as a legislator, when you're working to pass laws, when you're thinking about, um. Just any kind of law, you can talk to anybody you want, you can have as much of a preconception or a bias as you want. You, you, you can basically decide that you want to prohibit this in the town as long as it's within your authority, if you don't like it, no problem. You can be biased, you can have preconceptions, you can have ex party contacts, you can do anything, so, it's totally different, and so.
Lawyer said, I can.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's what you're supposed to be doing though, and you're supposed to be coming on the board, these are two, in two very different roles. You know, the role as a legislator is, you're coming in here, you guys have gotten on, have gotten on the board, probably because. You had some concerns, or you have some strong feelings about certain directions, you want the town to go in. Um, I could think of formal housing being one of them, uh, and you, basically, when you're passing legislation, dealing with those things, or, or. Or how you want to have the town water allocated, those are legislative decisions generally, and so. You can have as strong opinions you want, you can talk to anybody you want to talk to about it, you can talk to your constituents, but if there's an application that's pending before you on somebody's. Um, you know, rezoning application for their, for their one piece of property, or some small like that, or development approval, um, uh, for a subdivision. Plan, probably mostly administrative, but, um, any kind of, you know, development that comes to you, liquor license. People want to talk to you about it, you say, hey, you know, come to the meeting, I can't talk to you about it now, because I'm, I'm serving in the role, uh, a, a quasi judicial role. I can't discuss that with you, you want to know what the liquor laws, liquor laws should be, like, all, talk to me all you want. So, the key is to be able to distinguish between those two different situations, and knowing when you can talk and when you can't talk. So the key is to be able to distinguish between those two different situations and knowing when you can talk and when you can't talk. Um, so those, uh, oh, and the administrative stuff is really like proving contracts. Now, a lot of those, not administrative things will be done by your town administrator, town staff. So it's usually not, yeah, but there's no real rules with those either, um, if you wanna talk to you about a contract. Feel free, you can talk all you want, so, um. Six ten, I think that's about an hour.
Yeah.
Um, I'm happy to, I talk pretty fast, hopefully it'll just let lay it on you. But I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have anything you want me, I I didn't cover that I should, now, one last note, you know, I, you do have a. Elected official handbook guide, right? Yeah, what what is it, what is it titled? I got it, I got it. Yeah, and I actually, you know, I actually looked through it, it may need some update. Yeah, but I haven't, I haven't actually read it word for word back, I did look through it generally before I had this conversation. It's pretty good, uh, I, it was only, um, two years ago, I think.
Yeah.
And so, but I haven't just nitpick every word in it to see if it's fully up to date. Actually, it talks about how to handle public hearings, and I think it's, his procedures are pretty good in there, and so it covers the open meetings law, I I think it's. Pretty, pretty good, but I'll read it again more carefully the next part, so if anything that stands out, I can propose revisions to you all. But I think it's pretty helpful with that, yeah. Yeah, and my, my, my memo that I gave you, I don't know, it was like ten pages long, it's pretty dense, but. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, how about that too? So hope- hopefully this is helpful.
Do we have those um C M L books? You know, is there a library at Town Hall with those books?
Uh, yes. Well, and there's also the online resource with C M L too, so you can look up pretty much anything on C M L website. Um, they have a lot of things on, you know, on these topics as well, I think, but. I think it's helpful to have it, have a training here locally because. As you mentioned, you know, you can have home rule, statutory towns, statutory cities, and it all kind of varies a little bit, so it's nice to. Have it, you know, have some of this explained, and then I would say if you can't find something. Either in Town Hall and in the physical library or online, then you can always. Talk to me or Jeff, but probably, you know, Jeff can help you with a lot of this quicker, so.
Yeah, I know what books you have there, Paula, but C M L does have like a publication part on their website, and they publish. I think, I listed a couple of their publications, I think, in my memo too, that are worth looking at, and it seems like, you know, when I look on their website, when I wrote this memo for you, they. It seemed like they have less than I remember them having, so I don't know, Paula, if you have some older ones, they might be kinda good too, I don't know what's on in your library, but.
About a year ago, we sent out the trustee training from C M L, their document and things, it was downloaded and they sent it out.
Oh, great.
Time, but we have several new board members since then, and so I'll go back and see what we have, but.
Yeah, it certainly does good training, you're sure, C M L does good training, there's just, it's just good resources out there. But then, you know, like I said, like unfortunately, there's good general rules of thumb that work like eighty five percent of the time. And then there's the nuances where like, I earn my money, where it's, you know, it's a little tricky, and so I'm happy to help you out with any, anything, anytime, it's on air for. Um, hopefully that was helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, absolutely, you're welcome.
Well, uh, if it's okay, I'll go ahead and slide into kind of a discussion on the spreadsheet, and if anyone can, hopefully everyone had a chance to kinda look through this. And so, just from the beginning, here are my first six months, and then just discussions with staff and. And some of the trustees, there's certain things that I just felt like stuck out as things that, maybe we ought to talk about those things and see. You know, if there's better ways to handle them, um, and because they are related to your meetings and some of them will change. Times or discuss about, you know, things that might change your schedules, I really wanted to run them past you, but. First, so that I don't keep them waiting any longer, I did have I, our new I T consultants come. Just because the last meeting, you'll notice that Stephanie was observing our meeting and kinda getting some impressions. On how she felt that meeting could maybe function. Better, or if there were things that um she made as observations as just being an audience and kinda being around. So just kinda like her to real quick touch base on number five, which is the I T, maybe they can give you some background on some things they've done to make. I T a little bit better here in the community center, but then also any observations, so Stephanie, I'll I'll hand the memo to you, so. Do you want me to stand up or sit? Sit, it's fine. Very relaxed. So these were just my initial thoughts, Jessie and I have met with Lisa. In addition to my first thoughts about how to make it smoother. The reason the TV went out on Valentine's Day was because the. Doors are being unplugged and plugged in and plugged and plugged in, and the TVs are rolling back and forth, it's just been really hard on them. So my first thought would be to, and you can try and, you can try and. Would be to attach them to this wall that they could slide out or rotate out, but that would mean that. All of you, which I don't know how you feel about this, would have to shift over, and then we could have one TV there facing you. And then the audience over here with the TV facing them. Lisa also had some ideas about putting TVs up higher. And or you all having your own monitors. Um, so we talked a little bit about your, your laptops and your computers that you have and actually being able to pull up. Uh, Zoom just on your laptop and and if we had I T here to set you all up and get you all squared away. At the beginning of the meeting to make sure you were all up and running on that, what your comfort level would be. Um, Philip had mentioned to me that during COVID, that was one way that you guys had functioned, that you really just had. So there wasn't really a computer like right here, um, everyone had like their own laptop and kinda functioned through Zoom on that, so it kinda. Wanted to see also how you felt about that, cause that, out of all the options. I mean, I think either way, the community center will need to replace one TV because right now they're down to two. They've got the two rooms, perhaps, um, but, you know, I don't know that you necessarily. If you have two TVs and you got two rooms, if we eliminated. Uh, needing the second screen, which this one is for us, um, more than it is the audience. Then would that be acceptable? Because we will need to otherwise purchase a new TV. It was the uh, mother, was it the motherboard in that, or what, what was the deal with the TV?
That's what we're thinking, motherboard, just wore out the H D M I. Probably someone got shocked or.
Right, and granted, this room is shared, so it's, it's from use other than obviously the board and planning, which is. It's all sorts of groups using that TV and that resource, and.
I would like for the audience to be facing us as trustees, but I'd also like for the people on Zoom to be able to see us. And it looks like we must just be miniature.
Yeah, we've talked about that too.
So I'd like to work out some way that they can actually see us when we're.
Okay.
One of the thoughts we had was maybe. Eliminating the two TVs and putting one behind the board back, you know. Move you guys forward a little bit so you're closer to the camera, or we can figure out how to move the camera closer to you. Well, so it's kind of a wide, you know, kind of a wide half circle, so. A little bit of limitation there, but if we have a TV behind, like right behind you, then.
And they're not looking sideways.
They're kind of able to look straightforward and then they can kinda make eye contact as necessary, you know. However that looks, uh. If we have to like move it up higher on a stand or just kinda make a small, like a little bit bigger gap right in the center. Um, but that could, that could accomplish what you're saying, when it's facing, and face the board.
Yeah, that would help.
What do you think about that? Yes?
Um, I I would just say that there's, there are a lot of things that I can't see from this position on either TV. And if it's in our packet, it's not a problem, but if it isn't, it's, it kind of is.
Okay.
So, maybe another reason.
Need to make sure everything's in the packet if we.
Well, or, yeah, or if we do the monitors, that would solve that too.
Yeah, these like presentations are in the packet, then it's not really a big deal to us at all.
Yeah.
We all have our computers, I'm able to get presentations, but if it's a.
Slideshow.
Uh, the slideshow that we don't have.
Yeah.
Then it's, you know, it's hard sometimes.
Okay.
So that's where, yeah, that's where we thought having your laptop sitting there, or if we're, you know, depending on, everyone has different eyes, everyone has different. You know, things that they like to see, I'm fine with a screen this size and a screen this size.
And sometimes those presentations, not to, but um, we won't get, sometimes they'll come.
Yeah.
During public comment, and just like, you know, they will bring those materials and be like, here, can you put this up? We try and pre, I mean, I try and understand what they're going to bring, but not always do they tell us those things. So, but if it's a business item, we usually pre coordinate that, that's kind of.
Usually, a lot of times, we have several departments that will have things for the packet and then they'll have a separate PowerPoint.
Yeah.
And things, but what we could do is require, like, I might use Joseph for an example, cause he's an excellent one who always has two separate things. That's already prepared before the meeting, that he can have me email that to the board. And then the board can also have that accessed on their computer to where they can see that.
But sometimes it's even hard to see it on the screen with their presentations, and they're great presentations, but you find yourself like squinting or. And you have to toggle the, the bar back and forth, so, we're like, what's behind the, like.
Right.
What else we're doing, like, trying to follow the mouse on a map when trying to look at different areas for water or something, you're like, where's the mouse?
So it sounds like a lot of you are okay with maybe relying on your computer and maybe having I T come. Until people get really comfortable with logging in and getting the Zoom up and all that, they'd be here for the first like, you know. Fifteen, twenty minutes to just kinda coordinate that you're all good with getting those things ready, and then once you get a. You feel, you feel, and you know, to where you're okay with that process, then we could maybe just kinda. Cut them loose from that procedure, but just to get us started on that path.
See, we must all logged into Zoom during the meeting, like, and then is the cameras gonna be on us, or is that?
Yeah, so the camera will, uh, will still function from where it is, uh, but we can also look into. Making it so we're not so itty bitty on the, so we could either maybe move the camera up. You see, if we have the, if we have the big screen behind the mayor, then we would probably move up. I think the audience a little bit further, and so that they can see it, so then it makes sense to me, then we could zoom in the camera. But we might have to fix the circle a little bit, but we could work on those.
So we're all on Zoom, but we all have. Just our big old faces on, so I guess, never online can be like, oh.
We just have you guys log in without audio and video.
Oh, gotcha, 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 okay.
They would still see you on the camera camera, but.
Right.
And so, when, in the past, when we would all be on Zoom in the same room. It created a sound issue, do you remember that? We had a lot of problems with sound.
Right, so that, that's where we, you wouldn't log in, you would just open the meeting just to see it, you'd have no audio or video from the device, so.
And that's why I think it's important they come and they kinda get us set up so we understand how to do that for a while until you're all comfortable.
Yes, I just have a question, what's the advantage of doing Zoom versus everybody having their packet up in front of their screen? And then also providing them with any extra material that we get as far as PowerPoints to work that way there. You know, Cindy wants to look ahead in the packet versus what's on Zoom, she can't or bounce back to another page. Because she wants to reference, I'm just wondering, you know, what's the advantage of having everybody on Zoom versus having them. You know, have their packet up in front of them and the PowerPoint, because they're all furnished that link to that packet. So Paula, just a question about that, do you, um, like, if say, Jake Rashavi or one of our contractors comes. And they put a PowerPoint up, do we have that always ahead of time? We have to have that ahead of time, or if they have it that night that they bring it in. Lisa's gonna have to load it up on her computer, she can send it to me and I can email it to you. But normally, very rarely do we have somebody who gives us their information for a PowerPoint that night.
It's rare, but it, it sometimes does happen, but it's, I don't even know, maybe once since I started here.
Maybe we shouldn't honor their thing if they can't get their materials to us in time.
Thank you.
I mean, and that's not all the care for us either.
It seems like a huge pain to log in, have all of us log into Zoom to watch like five minute PowerPoint once a night.
So do you think that what Paula is saying, recommending is just to fill out the packet and half of the materials to, to go through yourself? If you think that that's acceptable too, we could try it that way as well, without you zooming.
Do we can have the screens as well, like?
We kinda do that now, though, I think probably everybody has their packets open, and if that means just a few more uh, slideshows from. Department heads that we can bring up, it's probably, I don't know.
Yeah, I prefer, I prefer being able to manipulate, sometimes like I'll look at a zoning map. Or, um, you know, the municipal code, or, you know, while the meeting's going on, I'll just be going where I wanna go. In my computer, not checking, not checking email.
So those are good, that's good feedback, thank you.
From our, from our perspective, it's really just eliminating multiple points of failure. So if a TV goes out and then everyone, like someone's fussing with the TV or trying to figure out, oh, well, that, that stopped working, moved out of the way, you know. It's just kinda limiting, like if you have your laptop, you have all your materials right there, you know, unless there's a wifi issue. It just eliminates a lot of this, and a lot of this setup as well, you know, there's just less that would, that would have to happen ahead of time, so.
Any other observations, Stephanie, that we should consider or anything?
No, you, I think the biggest thing is, we had talked, us three, about whether the TVs would be stationary.
Mm-hmm.
Stay put or need to be movable.
Right, yeah.
So even if they were behind the mayor, one of them, it would still be on a car, this is a question.
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, I kind of envisioned, well, and now that I'm looking at this, I don't know why I bought this. Uh, raised ceiling here in the middle, I thought that that only went half, and that that. Back over, you know, so I think that you couldn't really, I don't know how you would mount it from this, you probably could, you could put an anchor up there, but. I don't know, that's the ticket, I think we just roll it behind.
Just to share, prior to COVID.
Yeah.
There is a screen that comes up and down from there, and we used that for quite a few years, where the packet and things. Was projected up on the screen.
Oh, okay.
Still there. I heard that it has a mind of its own.
Every now and then it has a mind, and at that point, the room was shifted to where the mayor was back this way and. The audience was over on this side of the road.
I see.
There was a little, you know, different room configuration.
Yes, and and how did you guys like that as opposed to, to now?
It's fine, it worked fine for years.
Okay, so you're not opposed to reconfiguring how we set up in the room if we need to.
Do these microphones um. Make a difference, I mean, if we were to set up over there.
What do you think, Jessie?
I mean, even if, if they were all just centralized, this isn't that big of a room, so as long as they can be heard.
Shane's got something to say, I think Shane, you got something?
Yeah, yeah, just to add a, a little bit to this, as a person who set up that room for a handful of months for these meetings. Um, what, um, one, just to speak to the point of the, the camera, um, I think, you know, it could be. Um, kind of change where, you know, I, we did get a comment recently too, like, it it is tough to see, you know, all of. You guys sitting there, um, you know, at, and when we're broadcasting the whole room. You know, we do have the option to move that camera around and zoom it in on someone who's talking and and things like that, um, but, you know, just requires more. You know, staff and time and effort during the meeting, um, but as far as the setup goes, um, I I mean. If there were to be a mounted TV, I I think that'd be fine as long as we'd still have the movable option to use for, um, you know. Rentals and things like that, that, that's the other tough part is, um, you know, typically, the equipment is used by. You know, not just the trustees, but it, you know, those two TVs that are out there in the room right now, they're open to anybody. To use just whenever they rent the room, that's just included, um. The screen, um, does, does have a mind of its own, um, it works fine when it's on, but it is, you know, very low quality. Um, and it is, you know, kind of an old projector, that's why we went to the TVs instead of, um, the projector just. For a little better display quality, um, but it is still a, a fully functional screen and projector if we ever do wanna go back to that. Um. You just don't get as good a display, yep.
All right, well. Add to that one, okay, you guys are pretty good, you're off, but.
We can certainly look at getting new, newer. We can certainly look at getting new newer equipment to replace this if that's the route we want to go.
Okay.
Out there.
Yeah.
There's also cameras that can track as people are talking, so.
Yeah, I mean, a camera that would track that automatically and eliminate stuff would be very helpful. Then it could focus in on who's speaking.
Yeah.
Those are good for cog meetings on the common page. Here to watch from the other perspective.
Right.
Just fill that need.
Yeah.
And is there probably some way where we could like lock the HDMI cord so we're not having everyone?
Well, so we did. We did find this little HDMI swi- switch or splitter or whatever, so that kind of will help eliminate that a little bit.
Yeah.
So.
Protecting the area where it's actually pointed.
Yeah, I think we could put some little, there's little things you can buy that lock that down on the cords.
Sure.
Somebody and Shane had kind of discussed.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Thanks very much for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome.
Glad to have you on board.
And thanks for the input. That gives us some stuff to chew on, so.
Awesome. Um the other one that I I kind of highlighted some, let me first off kind of back up a little bit. I left some open spaces at the end only because I didn't know if you all had things that were in addition that were other areas to discuss that we needed to add to this. And I know I realize we're limited on time. If we needed to, you know, schedule another time to finish discussing, we could do that too, but does anyone have anything that they might want to add that's not on the list of areas to discuss? Because these were just areas that staff kind of collaboratively identified as things potentially discussed. Um some of them, like uh the first one, the placement of items, work session versus business item and public hearing, I think I put that on more so just for clarity. Um and even I was having a little bit of like trouble dis you know, distinguishing between the two. I had consult a um town attorney and just say, okay, give me a rundown again when it's a work session worthy item and when it's a business item and when it's a public hearing. And and I think it's important to remember that those work session items are are intended to be informational, but also large topics that we need to like keep maybe re talking and re talking like we are right now in a work session talking about this. Um that would carry on far too long for a regular business item or perhaps our staff needs feedback to even report with them. And so um I just put that on there just so that you know that I'm aware that we need to fine tune that a little bit distinguishing those. But also to just say that I think um you know, it seems like we've got a lot of work session type of things that are coming up. You know, um I just talked to Libby today about, you know, goals. Um the department's heads are all giving me their goals for the year that they would like to focus on. And then I want to add my goals and then have a retreat to discuss our goals. And so um you know, that'll be sort of a separate time. Um we'll handle that more like a retreat and maybe on the weekend or whatnot. There are things with comprehensive plan that we have coming up. We have lots of work session things that we're always talking about. And so, you know, then that ties into the next couple of items. I'm wondering, you know, the night that we went so long, we had a work session, we had a regular meeting and we had an executive session. Is there is there a preference to not do all three in one night and just I will schedule accordingly if you say Haley, so we don't ever want a night with all three? We would prefer a regular meeting with an executive session. If that's going to be more important, the work session you push out. Kind of give me some guidance on your thoughts on that.
I have a thought. I'll just jump right in there. Um I think when putting together the agenda, if there's a ton of things that are obviously going to require a decent amount of discussion, it's probably not the best idea to schedule them all at one night. And so in that, I think that's you two that come up with the agenda, so.
Yeah, the agenda was overloaded.
Yeah, so I think just having some mindfulness on like, hey, this is gonna obviously and going up to this part where business items would be fully vetted and ready for decision making. You know, some of those things don't have work sessions. Obviously, we can't have a work session for every business thing. Um and we again, we only have a day and a half once we receive the packet to interact with town staff if we have questions, if it needs town, if if that's needed. So I don't know if it's always possible to be fully ready for a decision. I think sometimes you have to have conversation. So I think that's a little hard to say, hey, you have to be ready for. But then again, um then making motion to I guess uh continue is always an option.
It is. Yeah, it is. And I think we tend to shy away from that sometimes, but I think there's nothing. Right. You know, unless it's like a pressing, pressing thing, there's times when you don't, I don't know. We can always do that. I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
Mm hmm. No, I agree.
I've seen it.
Everybody else?
I've once suggested on the executive sessions, maybe uh move those to the first, the front of the meeting.
Oh.
Um that way we know we have a time limit because we have a meeting starting at seven. And we know we'll get to that executive session, you know, discussion. Yeah, instead of having it a lot longer than, you know, we probably like it to. So maybe have those up front uh before the regular meeting. Just a problem.
More clarity too at that point. More clarity too at that point.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that too.
We've definitely done that in the past, I believe.
Have you? Okay. Okay.
Cindy?
I was just gonna say that it's not always the number of items that are on there, but what needs to be discussed. And also in our last executive session, the topic that was discussed, the trustees had questions and staff couldn't answer them. At that time, we should have quit the meeting. I don't think we should have gone on with, well, maybe this, maybe that, and what was being discussed, we didn't understand the issue and staff didn't truly understand it either because they were going to get with the attorney. And at that point, there was nothing more for us to discuss because nothing could be explained to us. And the meeting lasted much longer than that because we were coming up with ideas of what that might mean and not knowing exactly what it might be. And that wasted an awful lot of time.
And I think I think, you know, if you're starting to feel like, okay, we're spinning wheels, just like feel free to say. I I don't think we're getting anywhere with this, you know.
Because we definitely needed more information to make reasonable decisions.
And just saying, you know, I'd recommend that we just let staff get the answers and we'll maybe put it on the next meeting within the second session to discuss it further.
Yeah, maybe we could have stopped and just said, these are the things we need to know about before we meet again.
Right.
Have a little list, you know, bullet points. So maybe don't thrash around all night.
Good.
Yes, Peter?
Um so I think we've covered most, maybe most of the stuff on on page one. I do want to mention because I know Gina made a comment about, you know, having in on time. That's another thing that um we talked about, you know. Just pop up items. It seems like there's always a lot of pop up items asking for us. Um both that you guys come up with, but things that we internal one staff has. And so, you know, we're trying to I'm trying to say cut off, you know, staff knows that I would like to see what they have produced by Tuesday even so that I can get through it because, you know, we need to have it to um Paula to put together by Thursday, but that doesn't give me any time to go through and make sure that it's making sense and that it's ready and to vet through it. So we've kind of backed that up, especially on important items, not so much like staff reports. I will glance through those, but like business items are important to me, kind of precursor. Um but if you if you can help us also, I think by, you know, if I letters of support has been a big one lately just because grants are a big deal, which is paying off. So we have some very good news. Um and I don't know if you heard, but I'll announce tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
At the public hearing, but uh one point six uh is going towards the Carbon Street project through that Dole grant, so. Um amazing job by Joseph. I am going to bring that up in tomorrow night, tonight's meeting and I haven't gotten, I don't know that I got the official email on the other one yet, so I'll have a front of the morning for you tomorrow night.
Hmm.
So these things are paying off, but those letters of support, they've been kind of a a hard thing for us to deal with because it feels like we're jumping through hoops and you know, not everyone, if if staff is working on a grant, we're trying to think of those things ahead of time and get them on the agenda. But then people may come to you or people come to, you know, like nonprofit organizations or come to us. I guess two things. One, it's really important to us that they kind of interface with us because we need to be the keeper of that's how that policy, unspoken policy has always been that they would come to us and we would get it vetted through you, get it on an agenda with you. And you know, apparently there there was talk, I talked to Philip. Um there were certain situations where if it was last minute, you know, in very few circumstances where he was able to just kind of do it, email just to get the initial and then put it on consent, which, you know, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. It's letter of support, but um you know, we tried to do that with the Boys and Girls Club letter and then we found out because they didn't come to us directly that there were two different funds and thankfully Sue sent an email that said something about the uh Brittany Pedersen fund and so it it was two different funds and there was a lot of discovery with that whole thing that made it very bumpy. Um it's all vetted and it's going to be on tomorrow, it's agenda, one in consent and one as a business item. If you can let us know those things quick, as quickly or send them to us. I mean, just the easiest thing is to send them to me or Paula and we'll make sure we get through it for you, so.
Lisa, just one thing about that.
Yeah.
When it comes to getting a chance at some funding or or a chance to support somebody, I think for me, I that's a pretty easy decision most times. Um if we have a letter to to review. I think where there might be a possibility of like, I think Gina raised of of competing opportunities that we don't want to kind of cannibalize our our application. That would be another, that'd be a harder time than, I mean, we'd have to kind of discuss that, I suppose, but um but typically the letters of support are pretty easy.
Yeah.
For me, I mean, just to get on the fly and like via email or whatever way you want to get them to us if it's critical times of the essence.
Okay, okay.
I don't know how others feel about that.
I think ideally it should be known ahead of time to be able to figure it out in the meeting, but if that doesn't happen, that's fine.
Oh, an example of like, like the number six, that's gonna be like, for instance, we had the one meeting where I think it was cell or whoever needed the um, they wanted the extra space to.
Storage.
Yeah, for instance, they had five people that all had to talk that night. We didn't hear all five people, one person concise. But that like that was just like torture. It really was sitting there. It's like one person needs to go. But um things like that would be great if it was like just concise and maybe we limit that stuff to maybe five minutes max, three minutes, five max.
For the applicant, when like if it's the person that's coming to us and requesting it.
If it's depending on the topic matter, but I mean, it's that night they each talked for these minutes. And it was like a twenty, well, it's more than twenty minutes of redundancy.
And we and that's an interesting point because when it comes to the public talking, we we limit it to three minutes. But a lot of times we have an applicant that needs to talk. Um and so if if you're proposing like the applicant or the requestor, there'd be a a limit on that. I think we need to first of all, talk to the department head that's in charge of that item, like it's a planning item and it's a big, big development. They might need more time, but we can be a little more reasonable and let them know up upfront, you know, that we want it to be limited to five to ten minutes if possible.
Man, there's a quick comment on that. It depends upon the what kind of application you're talking about.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess there's like a easement application that you're referring to, which isn't like a quasi initial issue. It's just a matter of whether you're gonna grant it or not. You have full control over how much they want to talk. For a quasi additional application, you probably don't want to have like a set timeframe.
Sure, sure.
You probably want to give them a reasonable period of time. And if they're starting to waste time, then you can cut them off. But I think so like what you're referring to, perfect. You can say you got five minutes or three minutes. If anyone wants to talk, get it done.
Yeah.
Versus like an actual quasi additional decision, you gotta give them a little more time to present their case.
People are pretty responsive. They start making hand motions.
Really? Wrap it up.
Well, and let's talk about that because I don't know if you saw one of the items on here was uh you know, we we put times on the agenda, so we we have kind of goal times and sometimes we hit that right and sometimes don't always. We could absolutely have someone that's assigned to that role that just can be me or be Paula or be the person that'll start helping with the zoom type of stuff, that they add a minute before it's gonna be time to be done. They just say, okay, just let me know. You got one minute.
I don't think it should be you guys, but it could be a trustee.
Okay.
What?
Yeah.
Public comment, you mean?
Or the timing.
Yeah, the agenda time. Um.
Well, I feel like public comment. Public comment has definitely been uh the time limit in the past where I I don't know if it was the mayor's who did it, but it was definitely like three minutes.
Mm hmm.
And when it was up, it was up. So.
And I think it's easy to say three minutes, but then they carry on and they carry on. And so part of it is just saying, okay, get done. But the other part of it is other people have that I see do this will actually have, they have a clock on the wall and it times down. So but it's not so much bonuses on them. They they can say, okay, the the clock is saying that you're out of time. So I mean, I've seen it done that way. I've seen it done with cards. However, I just thought it and staff talked about this a little bit too. If we need to assign someone to to help assist with that, we're happy to do that. If not.
And again, you're talking not just about public comment, but about the allotted time for each item on the agenda?
No, more so about right now, I'm more so talking about public comment.
Okay, got it.
But we could do it, we could do it for both. Like if we stick to our agenda and the time that we allotted to, you know, I'm having to say, hey, we're at that time, just so you know.
Now I'm gonna throw Olivia under the bus here, but the mayor, to me, when I ran a few meetings, I did that your job is to still facilitator is to watch that time and keep that under control. To me, that was always my, I thought that was my responsibility. Just.
Okay, I can do that.
Good. Because I think I think your position, you're more facilitator, you're kind of letting get rid of your trustee hat and really focus on how the meeting's going, how the time's running. I mean, that's kind of how I see it.
Yeah. Good, I can just set my phone up to do it.
Yeah.
Because it makes the trustees then if we have to do it, then I feel like it makes us kind of like the bad guy and be like, hey.
Yeah, I want you paying attention and being ready to argue on yourselves.
Right.
Right. Good. Yeah, that's that's not our job. We're listening to what's going on here. We shouldn't have to be worried about how the what the meeting's being run. That's that's your, you know, that's really your position.
Thank you.
Good.
Yeah, I think that is a way that you could easily set it up too, or just be like, you're getting only the three minutes, so once your time's up, you're done.
Yeah.
And.
I'll do that.
Yeah, we'll support you whenever, you know, whatever.
Yeah, for sure.
Whatever you decide, Mary, that's 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 what you're supposed to do and I'll a hundred percent.
Right.
Support you on that.
And what about if we're getting in the weeds on a business item? I would like to do something like if we if we hit the time limit on it, twenty minutes, I could say ten minute warning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Finish it up.
That's a great tool.
Decide yes, no, or continue it.
Sure. Yeah.
Like give everybody just that ten minutes.
Like we're little kids before leaving our friend's house. You give them five minute warning.
And to be honest, Mary, that should all true for us too, the board. Sometimes we have a tendency to go on. And don't be afraid to go, hey, guys, I think we're, you know, we're uh repeating ourselves here. Let's, you know, let's move on.
And and I think also, you know, use the continue continued. Now, if you need to continues a topic to another agenda, I mean, if it's not earth shattering that it has to be that night.
Yeah.
There's always that opportunity and maybe you're you're talking about it so much because you didn't get the details that you need. To let us know, let staff know if there's something we can provide that will help you make those decisions. That's part of our job. So, you know. Yeah, that's great.
My timer.
Yep.
Are we timing it? We got ten more minutes and I know.
Yeah, leave it like.
I know Devon.
Makes me feel better.
Um, let's see. So we talked about the last two. Oh, sensitivities to participants. This was another one that was brought up and I don't know. I don't even kind of have to, I think part of this is knowing who's here and taking the time to get to know who's here, so I'm kind of looking forward to just shocking this, this new, the understudy to help coordinate this, so that I can focus on going and introducing and getting to know who's in my audience. But I know also, like, we, during that same meeting, I think it was, we had, uh, we had Sked here and Sam Gray was here and I guess we didn't get a chance to like tag that up and say, okay, they're, they're here, so, and they brought Tri-Vue guy, um, or not Tri-Vue, but Tri-State guy, uh, here, so, you know, and I think we just have to understand when those people are here in advance and make sure let mayor know. Just so you know, so-and-so's in the audience, we might want to give them a chance to speak. Um, did they need to speak at that meeting? No, and I didn't know they were gonna bring their whole entourage, I was just as surprised as anyone, but. Uh, and that's another point is, we talked about, staff talked about, if you are gonna have some visitors or guests, you know, making sure to let us know who's coming, so that we can be cognizant of whether or not they want to speak, if they're just there to kind of take it in, or how that's gonna work. But we don't want people traveling long distances and not, not having an opportunity to, to talk, I guess, if they want to, so.
I feel like some of that in the process been, uh, facilitated to be spoken during public comment on certain items where, you know, we're not having every applicant and every participant in every business item, speaking during the business item, if they need to speak, or if they wanna speak a little bit about it, then they can speak during public comment, just to keep the meeting moving, cause then I feel like it definitely slows down when there's, like, hey, are you there? Oh, they're not logging in, and then it's like five minutes of trying to figure out how to get them on.
You hear us?
Yeah.
You're like.
Yeah, just finding a way, you know, obviously we want some participants for some things to present, obviously. If it's like a developer or a, or something, but I feel like, you know, like with a, like a light, you know, s- some things are small where you could just be like, hey, this is me. Yeah, I don't know, I feel like that was something that was done in the past, but.
But I would say like, you know, Segrey came and spoke to us and a, a number of folks spoke to us kind of on the front end of the franchise, uh, process, or the.
Yeah, they did, the first meeting.
Yeah, and so I, I think, uh, something would fall into the category that Devon's talking about is really kind of the second reading of something that's almost a foregone conclusion. I wouldn't, I think to give a lot of time to talk about that is not necessary.
Well, and, and, and the reason it was so confusing, right, is because we don't have second readings normally. It was just that one nuance, franchise agreements are that one nuance that you have a second reading. So no one was even used to having a second reading, and what that meant, no one knew what that meant. And so, um, really it is just to literally read it, and that's what we did. Um, but we didn't realize they were here hoping to.
Can I bring up a thought just before Devon heads out? Um, and this isn't exactly on here, but the thought is, what if there's, like, what if we get to ten thirty? Like, is there a time where, like,
Yeah.
we reassess in general? Um, a friend had actually mentioned this, that, who was a board member at another municipality, and they, uh, we'd get to, I don't know, whatever, ten thirty or something, and they'd kind of reassess like, hey, are we gonna, like, it's the end of our night and we'll re-continue later, like, but there was a check-in point during the evening. Um, and I was just kind of curious, if the board would ever have a thought, or just, so in that, like, knowing at like, hey, at every meeting, or if we have our meetings and it hits ten thirty, we do a check-in and we decide if we're going to continue or not.
I mean, yeah, at some point, like say ten o'clock, you can look, look ahead at the rest of the agenda and say, we're gonna do this item, this item, and this item. And if we can, we'll get to the fifth item.
I, I think we have to be careful because that might snowball, if we keep doing that. Basically get pushed out, pushed out, pushed out.
I kind of hate to have a such time.
Just as.
I mean, just a thought, that that might be a, a product of that.
And I, I guess you can look at the agenda, and that's why you put the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. If there's something that you see that, you're like, oh, I'd rather see this happen first, because I know so-and-so is here. You can always recommend that. I, I know even Paula's recommended it a couple of times.
Yeah, thank you, that's good.
Oh, we should maybe, can we look at this, and she'll recommend it, but if you guys see something like that and want to recommend, remember, there's that opportunity beginning with moving the agenda. You could just suggest, recommend, approve with one change, and here's what I'd like to do.
Be nice if you all decided how, how long. We don't want to have any longer than three hours, just in general, and then when you're planning your meetings, you plan them so like your estimated time is sort of no more than three hours.
Right, that's why I was kind of trying to.
If you're checking in a long, you'd be like, hey, we're still on track, and, and then, you know, if you come meeting, somebody's, yeah, you know, they're hearing what longer, they can die, and you're gonna go over, but you're always shooting for like a three hour, no more than a three hour meeting, because frankly, I've had some meetings that have gone long for other clients, and after three, even after three hours, it's the end of the day, you've already been working all day long, people are not making good decisions, uh, it's irrational, you get upset, and you can attempt there, sometimes, go to eleven, but like if you're, if you're, if your estimated time is no more than three hours for every meeting, at the most, then you'll probably, and you can stay on it pretty much, you'll probably be ending around ten most of the nights.
I mean, that's kind of like, you know, y'all want to agree to, hey, we have a three hour limit and we reassess. You know, when it gets to three hours, mayor says, okay, we're at three hours, so let's talk about, or do you guys want just move up the rest of the items that we have left to the next agenda?
I think you're probably quiet, and it starts at seven, too, most of them start at six now, but that's all your decisions.
And that's another thing too, is, I think that's on here as well, is, you know, do you want to start at a different time? Do you want to have work sessions on a different time? I mean, there are some options to make things a little less painful.
I'm getting in trouble with my conductor. Oh, yeah, I apologize, this is the only stipulation with me being able to do it this night, is because I had four minutes at seven.
Do you have any quick thoughts on time limits or anything like that?
Um, thoughts I have, I think, I really like what Jeff said, is that if we can stick to those kind of time periods throughout the meeting, I think then we don't have to worry about getting to a point where we're like, hey, it's ten o'clock, and we're not making good decisions. I think as long as we're moving along, that's good. Um, I don't remember what the other things were.
Starting earlier.
Starting earlier.
Yeah, separate nights personally for me are hard, because I work nights at the moment, so, and you know, I have a lot of things that happen at night where everyone else seems to not.
Yeah.
So if you guys want to do that, I can see if I can try to do it, but it's hard, my schedule, and if I am making money at night, I have to forego at least one night a week.
But could you come earlier, was that what?
Yeah, I could come earlier usually, because I don't have that night on.
I mean.
But that's, you know, not as easy for other people, so.
That's what I was gonna say.
Six, um, you know, I mean, do you think like five, like.
I mean, I, I don't mind that, but I.
Our business is still open at five o'clock.
Yeah.
Five is too early.
Feel free to keep discussing and don't, I, I trust you all to figure these things out, so.
Thanks, Devon.
I'm not gonna, and let me know if you do something crazy.
I mean, I wouldn't mind six if, cause I mean, then, let's say we try to aim for like a three hour and, oh, crap, okay, we're gonna go for four and it's ten, then yeah, it's longer, but
Right.
worse, yeah, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, or midnight.
With that, but.
The one thing I guess is public comment, I mean, that's kind of right in the middle of a lot of people's dinner hour.
If they want to come, they, they show up if it's at a forum.
I guess, I don't know, I mean.
We could be a public comment around, it's a little easier to have it at the beginning of the meeting, but that doesn't mean that we have to, I mean, there's nothing set in stone, so if you think we're here.
Yeah, I mean, I might just ga- somehow, there's a way to gauge that.
I like telling people it's at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, that's true too.
Yes, they do have online, that's good, that's.
Yeah.
A good point, yeah. They could be sitting around their dinner table, you know, like, gracing their hands.
At least six thirty. Try it, and then, you know, maybe move it back um, to six or whatever, but, um, sometimes the work sessions are hard to make at six o'clock. So I would hate every business meeting to start at six, but I'm one vote of six.
Well, what would we do with the work sessions, if we were starting meetings at six?
So, um, you know, work sessions, that and you could either, you could either start them earlier, here's my thought on work sessions. I, the work sessions that I've been to, and Hastings did a work session every other night, so like, it was the second and the fourth, Tuesday was the regular meetings, and then they had like the third, uh, Tuesday was a work session. But not everyone, not all the council members were able to make those. And it was just, they, we understood that we were talking about the information, it was informational, it was background, and we taped them. So if someone could make the work session, there were no decisions involved anyways, they could still play back the work session, catch up to what happened and be up and ready. If they needed to ask staff questions between the work session and when it came to a regular agenda item, they could do so. So I'm not so, I don't put, I personally don't put so much precedence on all of you being at a work session. We obviously need a forum, but if there's a couple of you where it just doesn't work with your schedule, you don't think it's a killer deal if we were to do a separate night?
And, and tape it.
Yeah, and tape it, yeah, we, we do tape all of the work sessions, and, um, we've been talking about that too, because in looking at how we're taping things and whatnot, and uploading things and trying to get them uploaded, um, we discovered that sometimes work sessions were uploaded and sometimes they weren't, so we're gonna be a lot more consistent. We decided about if the work sessions are all rolling out, unless there's just a good reason why not to, but I think that we need to have those things out if we tape them, unless it's an executive session, there's no reason.
I don't, I don't mind that idea, I just, I hate that Devon just left right before we're kind of talking about this, because it impacts on the most, but I think one part of that would also be, if you can't make it, I think having, um, you know, we have materials along, like usually for work sessions, we have materials a good amount before, not just the two days sometimes, and so if we're able to get the materials far enough ahead, it allows the member who can't be there to at least ask questions ahead of time, like here are ten questions I have, or five questions based off the material I read. If it could be addressed and talked about, because I know, you know, one of the least, I can speak for myself, and I apologize to Mark about this previously in that previous executive session, is a lot of times when we're talking in circles and spinning and stuff, it's because like these are thoughts I've had about issues, and this first time we're kind of talking about this issue to a certain extent, and so without having an outlet somewhere else, it comes up in this one session, so I think that it, I, it gets tacked on to something that's not really germane to, and, and that is my fault, and I apologize for doing that. Um, but I think, you know, all of us have curiosities and are interested in these topics, so if we have a work session and you can't meet, that you can at least ask those questions ahead of time.
Right, yeah, if you get the materials ahead of time and you need to ask questions, you can always bring those questions up, and I mean, like, there have been a couple of times that we've gotten questions from you, Peter, and we try and, we try and circle up with you if we can, we get it, you know, reasonably ahead of the meeting, we can try and, you know, answer a question and bring it up, we make sure to bring it up in meeting, so that you all get a chance to hear that same question and answer it if you need to, but.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking specifically about addressing it in the work session, and so like, you know, if Devon can't make it, but he can give five questions, but we talk about it as though he's here.
Yeah.
Then we can give feedback to him.
Right, so, yeah, so maybe getting you the material a little bit sooner with, if it's a work session, so that you can get us feedback before the work session if you can't make it.
Uh, Lisa, a question for staff and you specifically, um, so if we shorten this time span for our meetings, how does that affect staff as far as things that are coming in front of you? Can you adjust that?
I absolutely can, and, and you know, the beautiful thing about that is, we, we try and tally up, we get from the staff department head, how much time it's gonna take them, try and estimate how much discussion as best as we can. It's not an exact science, but if I know we only have three hours, I'm gonna make sure that we don't have any more than three hours worth of stuff on, it'll help me go, okay, if we can't have all of this, this meeting, then we need to figure out which one we can push forward, um, instead of trying to get it all in. So I think that would be very helpful to have a limit. We said tonight that we want to have a three hour time limit with opportunity to reassess at the three hour mark. That would be helpful to me a lot, I, I would appreciate that.
I do think we need a little bit more of a realistic estimate though, for some of these, like I think on the agenda, when I see them, I'm like, five minutes, they're not even gonna finish the presentation in five minutes, let alone conversation time, like.
None of us speak, yeah.
Yeah, so if we're gonna stick to it, those need to be a bit more realistic.
Try and be a little more realistic with those then.
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing is work sessions potentially on a, on a different night would be acceptable if you got materials sooner, and if, um, if we are able to get questions answered, um, and then bring those questions to you as part of that person that's absent. Is that what I heard? Or are you still thinking you want to do work sessions on the same night?
I'd opt for, I'd be fine to bear it personally, so I think, I mean, when we do work sessions sometime, like, and if they would run a little, like, my brain's in other place, and I want to have all my focus on that, and not being like, okay, we gotta listen to this. Then we get maybe ten minutes, maybe get a whole half an hour to conversate back and forth, depending on who is presenting, um. But I want to kind of focus on the meetings, that's where the nuts and bolts of a lot of things are, so I'd personally rather have it different days, or maybe sometimes we have to have it the same, but room for adjustment, I think, would be appreciated, so I would be fine with whatever the board decides, but technically, I think having some separate days would be better, just for brain space.
So if we sent.
A couple of questions, you know.
Sure.
First of all, are we gonna designate a set night for work sessions, like it's every third Tuesday?
I, I think we need to talk about that if we can.
And then, does an attorney need to be present at the work sessions? Cause I know you also have meetings.
Well, you don't need an attorney at your work sessions, like as a rule of thumb, um, you have an attorney present for some, if something going on that involves legal advice. I have meetings every other Tuesday for another client, so we, you have, you know, I, I've kind of had Catherine Sellers, who happens to do a lot of your work here, she does tons of work with you, so she probably has a meeting on that Tuesday next week, but.
These are for the work sessions, the executive sessions would still be.
Right.
Yeah.
On the meeting nights.
I mean, so, so for example, Mansion Springs, they, they meet on the second, the first and third Tuesdays, and they do their work sessions second and fourth Tuesdays. I don't go to their work sessions, I go to their meetings. And I go to your meetings when they're doing their work session, so, I mean, typically you don't need an attorney in a work session unless you need some specific legal issues answered.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think aside from, with all the work sessions that you've had so far, this has kind of been helpful, obviously, with the training and whatnot, but, um, in the car industry, but the other ones, I don't know.
Yeah, I did, I, I come to some, it's important, uh, but.
We, we have to have a forum for our work session.
Yeah.
Yes.
Still a meeting.
So I'd be open to hearing what your thoughts are, if we did a separate night for work sessions, what would, with those terms, materials sooner, and, um, starting at you know, six or six thirty, or what time would you want to start? Sounds like we could do six thirty for regular meetings, and that, that would work for the majority of us. If we backed up the time to six thirty.
Yeah, I'd use that same time for the work session, actually.
For both, okay. Does anyone have ideas or thoughts? Would, would you want to try for like, uh, the third, the third Tuesday?
Yeah.
Of the month, being the work session?
I've gotten really used to over the last five years, organizing my life around the second and the fourth. So I might not always be here, but.
I mean, I guess if it's a, sometimes we have really short work sessions, it's a pretty small item.
Yeah.
I would, I would rather have those tacked on to the meeting.
Yeah.
If it's something bigger, okay, like that. And, and I also think too, I mean, you, you all as staff, I hate to have you all being dragged in more nights than you need to be, you know, but, so I, I actually favor having work sessions really on the meeting nights, myself. But, um, again.
Um, again, but if it's something significant, well, like this was, then I, I never mind coming to a special session.
Great.
But actually, for what really what Libby was saying, I'd kind of rather have it close to a meeting date instead of in a. A week out, just for the ability to plan other parts of my life, but that's personal and selfish.
What are your thoughts?
I prefer Tuesdays, like, I kind of like them on several nights, just part of, to what Gina says, just that's what we're focused on instead of. We're doing this, but I also in the back of my mind know an hour and a half we're going to talk to this other issue where I have all these questions. So. That's kind of helpful, but at the same time, I don't know if that outweighs everybody else's schedule needs. Tuesday, I kind of like having Tuesdays that way, just my mind, I know. I don't really commit to anything on Tuesdays because it could be on the night, it could not be, but, um, you know. So if we don't have it on, uh, the night of a meeting, then I'd say Tuesday. The following week or something like that, but that's why.
I'm super flexible, whatever everybody else wants, I can make it happen.
I, I like having the work sessions on the meeting night. But if we were going to have to do them on separate nights. I would, I would kind of like to have the meetings like we had this one tonight. We're having our board meeting tomorrow night. I would kind of like to have them together so it's. You don't have to worry about it for a while, but it's also depends on what works for other people.
So what, what if we were having, if we had a work session that was a half hour, it would be on the meeting night? And if it's going to be a hour and a half type, you know, like for the comprehensive plan. Do those on the Monday night before.
That would work better for me, someone another board that meets the first. But I'll miss it for this because this is, you know, the bigger board for me, the bigger.
So how about we do this? How about we send out an email, carbon, blind copy every time? So.
Yeah.
Probably have Paul send it out with a couple of different configurations and just kind of do like a formal vote. Um, based on the feedback that we've got here. And then, and then just make some decisions. We could use our discretion. It's hard, it's kind of hard to. Determine whether or not a topic is going to take an hour or half an hour. Sometimes I think, oh, this is going to be. So easy, it's going to be a half an hour and now it ends up taking an hour. I mean, that's kind of the point of a work session is, uh, it's kind of hard to monitor whether it's going to be short or it's going to be long. But I can sometimes guess that like carpet street, that was, we knew that was going to be a longer one. We knew tonight would be a longer one that would need to be on a separate night. So I can try and do that to the best of my abilities. Understand I've not failed through.
Sure.
So, um, but we'll send out a couple of different, I think an email.
I think this is really, this is great because previous when I was on the board, you know, the other staff way back there. They put so much pressure on us to cover all these things. They would throw so many things at us. And they convinced us that, oh, we need to do this tonight.
Right.
We don't, you know, things are just going to all fall apart. And it's so nice for having this discussion that, you know, you're more flexible on this. I think it's really important.
Not going to want to do it and then you wouldn't want to continue to do what you're doing if we don't work.
Just thank you for that.
I feel like the fear of God was put in, you know, into us with the like, don't like, do a continuum, like. It was, I, when I first joined, I always felt like that was something you really didn't do unless absolutely had to. But there's been times where I'm like, I'm scared to say, I think maybe we can continue this. So I really don't, not comfortable with it, but. Then it was like, well, it's going to upset the balance of everything else. But I'm like, I don't. I feel forced into a position. So I agree with like what Mark's saying, that flexibility.
Yeah. Definitely have options with.
Uh, I know we're kind of wrapping up here, so I just wanted to address this since we're already kind of doing this, is the staff report section, section?
Yes.
And the verbalizing of the written report, like I totally get where we're coming from on that one. I, however, I. In their group, like on the consent agenda right up top, we're just like voting on it or not. It doesn't really allow for any discussion about the report. And so I don't know if we want to have like a. Before the consent agenda, like an open question for staff on their reports or something, because like normally there'll be a question. For Paula about short term rentals or Sean about water usage and, you know, um. So usually with the staff report, there's some questions on there or, um, with the chief's report, you'll often have questions about different statistics and. So I feel like we should still have some space for us to ask staff about something in the report.
So if it's on consent agenda and you realize as part of. When you vote on consent agenda, there's that time where. When you will say, does anyone have any questions? That's the perfect spot for that.
Then we'll just consider that as part of the conversation for staff.
Yeah, yeah. So if there's something you're reading that's on that consent agenda, whether staff report or any of that. You can always ask questions or bring something up that you want us to answer.
You're going to ask to have it pulled out from the consent agenda and made into a business item.
Can.
Can, I, I guess I would ask if it can kind of go both ways a little bit, like, um, I get that we're trying to tighten our meeting times, but. What I, I kind of miss in not having staff present those reports is. Uh, just the chance to say really great job. It's off, really awesome that you got that grant or that you got that trail built or whatever it is, but. And, you know, so I, I'm not suggesting a big lengthening, but that maybe it goes both ways. If there's just one thing the staff wants to highlight. From their report that they really want us to focus on, because we do read them, but we've read so much else by the time we come back in.
Yeah.
Um, that, uh, um, and so I guess I'm also, uh, you mentioned that some staff kind of like to have a chance to. To talk about it. So I, I'd want that opportunity for them if it's not inappropriate in some judicial way.
And that's kind of how we're handling it right now. I mean. But, uh, we, we have kind of a set time, so they're not doing it every month that they're verbalizing it. It's like every other month is what it was about to be except for people in pressure. Um, so. In essence, like the other day, we had our team lead meeting and we talked about staff reports. Dean said, you know, Lisa, I've, I've got a report, but he's like, there's nothing really exciting about it. I don't know that I need to verbalize it, but it was his time to do that. And, and Sean said, well, I've got some things that I actually would like to talk about. So then we just kind of swag around.
Yeah.
So we just kind of work that. And then we have some flex spots too that we build in. So. You know, it's not just two people. There's that flex spot in case someone says, I have something too. So we are kind of doing it that way, if you like it that way. And then also just again, remembering. If it's on consent and you have a question, you can always ask that question. We can pull it out, we can put it on a business item. We have that flexibility. Paul, you.
One of the things I want to point out with the consent agenda, the reports that are listed there, normally with the new procedure. That department head is not participating in the meeting even via Zoom.
Okay.
So if it's in consent agenda, they've been given the instruction by you that they do not have to attend the meeting. So.
Right.
Here has a question for Chief Bertram. And he's in the consent agenda, he doesn't have to be here by Zoom.
Right.
And things. So that's where we're going to need to figure out.
And also.
Now that the department heads need to be available each meeting.
Or at least for the first fifteen minutes or something, ten minutes.
It becomes part of the next meeting, uh, you know, as a business item.
The other thing to consider here is we've kind of moved that around a little bit and, and the thought was when we moved that around on the agenda. One for tomorrow night on me, but, um, we moved it to the end. The reason we moved it to the end is. We felt like public hearings were the most important thing to get through in regular meetings. So those went first. Then, and plus sometimes we have people that travel for those things or are waiting on us. Items. So we moved the staff report from the front of the meeting to the end. I don't know if you've noticed that lately.
Yeah.
Um, that was all because like you either make, someone's going to wait no matter what, right? So you're either going to make your staff wait or you're going to make your public wait. And so it was kind of like. We're testing that out to figure out if, if that would be more acceptable and like what I did. The one night was I just told, it was Valentine's Day, so I told Chief Bertram. You know, I'll just text you when we get close to the time that we're going to have the staff report so that you could come over then. So, but the other thing to consider is they're not doing it every single time. So they're not obligated to every meeting. So they have one meeting, they don't even have to show up. So I don't know what the magical.
Is it something that you can sort of play by ear by looking at the agenda and also seeing the staff report that you could say, okay. This is five minutes, that's seven. I mean, I know you can't be.
I don't usually have a staff report by then.
Okay.
That they're giving to me. Uh, you know, some of them are good about getting it to me early, but some of them. You know, are not able to just make that happen with their regular momentum. So I may get that like right. On, you know, the Tuesday, they're trying to shoot for Tuesday with everything to me, but, um. Some of them it's Thursday and I'm getting it, so.
Well, I, I guess what I'm thinking is like if a staff person has to be here for something at the end of the meeting or executive session or something like that, then. Maybe it's not such a hardship that they have to wait the whole meeting, but if they just have a five minute report and they have to wait. A long time or go through the whole meeting, I don't know. It's, and it's, that's your call, not mine for.
And, and that, and that's kind of where I'm at is, uh, with verbalizing the reports. Kind of, is that important enough that we need to verbalize it? Anyways, you get the written reports. If you read through them in your consent agenda. Um, is it? And you have that to where you could ask questions and maybe we move it back to the beginning of the meeting and they all attend. And if you have questions on their, on their written report, you ask the questions. Or I guess we can have them highlighted, but I like your thought on it's important to reward. And give praise when they do things that are. Also very important.
So I, and if they simply want contact with the board, I mean, I could respect that as well.
We want contact with them.
Yeah, right.
I think.
Think we, what we might do is just leave it on there, but maybe consider moving, moving it back up. Um, because we are, if we're going to break up the work session, that helps to eliminate some length anyways. And if we're going to have a time limit, that, that will be helpful as well. So. You think I'm a little more comfortable with putting it back up front and then just doing it the way that we are? If they want to verbalize and they've got something great. And then that way you get, you get to ask questions of those that are on consent and they can all attend.
Another option, you know, rolling back to Peter, your comment that you review the packet and you see a report that you have questions on. And let's say it is Chief Bertram and I'm using him because he's under consent agenda tomorrow. If you have questions that you know you'd like to address to him, then we can reach after them and let him know. Can you come to the meeting because we have, you know, trustee, he has questions. And then that way we can make that arrangement with them because that's going to be our fine dance there is, you know, a board member hasn't.
This staff report, it's, it's, it's really the hardest thing on the agenda for me. I mean, it, it, it is because I want them to be able to have that. That direct interaction with you when they need to and they want to. But I don't, I don't consider it something that's like a public hearing or a business item that. Really deserves your attention that you need to make decisions on too. So it's just a kind of happy meeting.
Yeah, I mean, just a quick, I was saying, because then the consent agenda is fine as long as we have a space to ask questions if we have them. And. So I mean, that was where I was coming from on that. And then, you know, if we do want it verbalized, I don't think we need the whole. Like if we decide to go that route, I don't think we need the whole report.
Yeah.
Verbalize, maybe just top line or very executive summary and then open it up for a question. We don't need like it to be reread.
And they've been doing that a lot more. I hope you've been noticing that, that they've been. Doing three, I told them to pick three things that.
So I think we should wrap it up.
Y'all people just speak, 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 speak. Yeah. Um, one of the things that I think would shorten our meetings and I'm going to bounce off of Mark. In the past, when we had someone that was go with. They're wanting their liquor license when we, at the initial thing. The person that is wanting it, requesting it gets to speak. And then they have public comment. When we close public comment, it goes to trustee interaction. And those people don't get to speak again unless we have a question for them and ask. Them directly. But that one night, that lady spoke after every trustee did. And she just went on and on and on. And it was like this, do, do you remember how that works?
No.
And then isn't that how we did it was after all the public comment and whatever, when we do our. Um, trustee, um, questions and answers. Those people are done speaking at that point unless we have questions for them.
Yeah, and if I remember right, I think that might be due to mayor's discretion on that.
Yeah, I mean, we used to, I mean, we usually allow the applicant to have a chance to respond to the public comment. Usually applicant. Well, usually, usually it's staff, applicant, public, applicant. Um, just to wrap it up, um, but you don't have to allow the applicant to come back. That's sort of a standard public hearing process.
And then the trustees deliberate.
Trustees deliberate and decide and, you know, if you had, if you have questions, you can always bring somebody back up. But I usually. Usually when you close the public comment portion, you, you know, make a decision and you don't go back. Yeah, I remember that one. That was getting a little out of control.
Come on, yeah. Yeah.
They better.
Yeah, I mean, you have, you have to be less nice.
Yeah, you've got to throw that gavel down, let me see, oh, you got it in you.
You have, you have a gavel, yes.
Yeah, hang on tight.
And I think your, your, your elected official handbook has like the public hearing process in there. I think it does allow like a. Uh, you know, a quick response. But you know, you can be like, if you have anything you want to respond to, you know, keep, keep it short, you know?
Yeah.
So I think we have enough information here. Hard to be nice and run a meeting.
All right, well, you've all had it now. The hammer down.
created a monster.
No, I think that that, I'm glad you reminded me of that one because that one I also had on there. We had some couples that night that came in and we're talking. We had all sorts of things that created that whole storm with TVs not being right and you had to kind of go over there. So it was just.
Oh, she used to be something.
But I really appreciate all this. What I think I'll do is I will, I also got an email with some times on work session. Maybe just suggest very few, but just a couple of round rules, like the, the time limit of thirty hours, you know, reassessment. But again, ground rules, they're rules that we all know about and we, we kind of have not really applied to these rules. But they're not, we could add it to the handbook if you want, but, you know, let's.
Try it out for a while.
Try it for a while.
Are we going to six thirty then?
Yeah, it's going to six. Oh, thirty, I think was what.
But we're not starting tomorrow, obviously.
No.
No.
In April, it's the water one, water education.
Can we print?
No, not, not the one on the twenty eighth, Cindy Cavell.
That's good though, because you need to take official action to change your. Ways, so you can do that on the twenty eighth.
Okay. Okay.
Because you already said your regular meeting conflict date, so you have to change that.
Yes.
We'll put that as an agenda item on the twenty eighth.
Perfect.
Good. Three minute.
I appreciate everyone humoring my whole kind of discussion. I, I know some of these things.
That's good.
Are largely, you know, a part of my role, but I want everyone to be comfortable with the decisions. That I make that affect, that may or may not affect you, because you're the ones that got to come here and you're. To do that too, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I think one of those sandwiches is for you.
Oh, yeah, I'm taking one.
Second, third, fourth.
Okay, Lecrancy Cobb, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Awesome.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.